Okay, we are live on YouTube.
All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the September 20th, 2022 Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We will begin this afternoon with our public hearing agenda for work on new work on designated properties. And we'll begin with public hearing item number one, and I will turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation, to take us through the afternoon agenda.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Public hearing item number one is LPC 22-11852, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1066, Lot 2, 91 8th Avenue in the Park Slope Historic District. This is a French Neogrec style rowhouse built in 1883, and the application is to modify window openings and install a rear deck.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. The staff will take you through the presentation, so Marcello, please feel free to begin.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Marcello Pacheco, Preservation Staff. This item is 91 8th Avenue, which is located between Union and President Street in the Park Slope Historic District. The proposed scope of work is at the rear facade, which is the beige coated building shown on this slide from a vantage point on President Street. The Commissioners will note that this proposal is being reviewed today due to the visibility of the rear facade from President Street. This next slide shows the existing conditions at the rear facade and existing nonhistoric addition. The proposal is to remove the addition, alter and combine window openings at the lower two floors, and install multi-light metal door assemblies and a metal deck and stair to the rear yard, as shown here in elevation. Also shown on this drawing are light fixtures, window replacement at the upper floors, and a setback guardrail installation at the roof, all of which are part of a larger scope being reviewed at staff level. This slide shows a rendering of the proposed installations and deck, as seen from President Street, and on the right photo, the view from an adjacent yard. Shown here are a selection of similar installations, which are also visible from public thoroughfares. This is a detailed rendering of the proposal, showing the inspiration for the ironwork design. I will end on this rendering of the proposal, and the applicant will now give a brief statement and is available to answer any questions.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. You can hear me okay, I hope. My name is Christine Harper from Harper Design Build. I'm the architect on this project. Thank you for reviewing this project today. We appreciate your time. We just wanted to state that, you know, we do feel that this project is, you know, minimally visible because only from President Street. Obviously, it is on the rear, and is a more visible situation than most rear facades in the Park Slope Historic District. But only from President Street, and really over fences and planters. And you really just see part of it, as you can see in slide number one. And secondly, we're really excited about, you know, bringing some life back to this rear facade and connecting the upper windows and the lower two-story. The opening, as you see, in replacing the windows and making them contextual between the upper punch openings and the lower. We want to bring back the divided lights on the uppers to match the lower, and we're doing a dark finish so that everything matches, and it has a very cohesive look, which I think will be really great for the neighborhood. I think that's it for now. Do you have any questions?
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions, so why don't we move to public testimony? If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Sonia Gior to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. So we do have sign up. Helen Freeman from the Historic Districts Council, and Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Helen Freeman, Historic Districts Council. I'm just waiting for the truck to pass. Okay, HTC found this proposal to be modest, handsome, and entirely appropriate. Our one comment is that we believe the applicant should put further consideration and study into how the large masonry opening, its structural support, and the articulation of the wood-brick moldings are detailed. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do not see any signups in advance, and I don't see any hands raised. So I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board 6 recommends approval from their land use committee. I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to turn back to you, Ms. Harper, and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments of those detailed comments by the Historic Districts Council.
Sure. One of the things that we, you know, we did various studies internally within our office on how to detail around the two-story opening that we're proposing. And when we, we felt that the wood trim around it actually gave a nice potential quality to it, and also helped to feel less industrial. We actually really appreciated the comments from our meeting a few weeks ago with the community board, and we actually changed the scale a bit on that, on that frame surround, and brought the scale down a little bit, which was one of their suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Right, Commissioners, do we have any final questions here? All right, I'm starting to send you all requests then to unmute so that we can begin our discussion. All right, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion, and the proposal is to create this double-height opening at the lower floors and install the balcony and stair. The dimensions and details and expression of and materials of this proposal, it would be, meet all of the criteria in the rule for window changes to allow a staff-level approval if it were not visible from a public way, so it's the visibility that is triggering our review. And so the view on the left is the view from President Street looking over fences, where you see really the top half of it. The view on the right is a view from within the rear yards and not the public way, so we should consider, you know, this view on the left, which is really the view from the public way, and I imagine, you know, not a zoomed but a focused view, if you were to step across the street, you would, I think, see more things in the larger context. Okay, so we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This is a fairly easy one. This is very straightforward, and it is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Textbook case of how to do this. I think it's excellent.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree. I agree. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I also agree. This is really well done. It does, from the point of visibility, it seems very kind of typical, makes sense, does not call undue attention to itself. I think it's very appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I agree. I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed, appropriate.
And Commissioner Devonshire?
Let it be viewed from the public right-of-way, and let it serve as an example for the megalomaniacs who want to do something else. This is excellent.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, on that note, I think we have a consensus to approve, so Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
Yes, I would either like to do, in the matter of LPC 22-11852, 91 8th Avenue, Park Slope Historic District, the application is to modify window openings and install a rear deck. Noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate damage or conceal any significant architectural features, that the only parlor floor level of the proposed enlarged window openings at the rear facade and portions of the rear deck railings will be visible from a public thoroughfare and will be seen in conjunction with existing tall fencing and plantings, and therefore will not draw undue attentions to itself. That the proposed deck that divides the enlarged window openings will help retain a sense of the historic floor levels and the residential scale of this rowhouse, that the proposed window assemblies will feature divided lights and the finish to harmonize with and support the fenestration pattern at the rear facade, that the ironwork details at the proposed deck railings, where we call the historic ironwork at the front facade, security grills, and that the work will not detract from the significant architectural and historic character of the building or the Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
I was eight in favor and none opposed. Motion passes.
Mark, I think you missed me.
I thought, well, I'll call you now, Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
I think it's.
Is it still eight in favor?
Yeah, still, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that's approved, and we'll move to the next item now.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 22-09901, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 5202, Lot 57, 511 East 16th Street in the Dittmas Park Historic District. This is a bungalow-style house designed by Arlington D. Isham and built in 1909, and the application is to replace entrance stairs.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. The staff will be taking you through the presentation. Stephanie, if you just want to click on your screen, perfect, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Stephanie Kraut, Preservation Staff. As described, the item before you today is for 511 East 16th Street. The application is to replace the existing wood entrance stairs at the West East 16th Street porch with blue stone and brick stairs, as well as replace wood coping at the stair walls with the wood composite coping. The property is located on the east side of East 16th Street, bounded by Dittmas Avenue to the north and Newkirk Avenue to the south in the Dittmas Park Historic District. And here you can see an image of the entryway stairs from the west on East 16th Street. For context within the streetscape, we have images here looking south on East 16th Street, on the left and in the center, and from the corner of Dittmas Avenue and East 16th Street looking south to the right. Here you can see the property looking north on East 16th Street. And for historic context, you can see the 1940s tax photo to the left, and to the right is a designation photo. It's important to note that the property did receive a staff-level permit in 2012 to unenclose the porch, install wood shingled cladding, and replace the porch stairs to match the historic condition. And here we have some up-close photos of the existing condition at the steps, as well as at the stair walls and coping. Again, you can see here the proposed changes, which is to install red brick risers and blue stone treads, as well as install white-finished Trex wood composite coping at the stair walls. And here we have examples of houses within the district that have brick or brick-and-stone entrance stairs, including 462 East 16th Street, 1612 Dittmas Avenue, and 490 East 16th Street. And the owners here would like to briefly speak on their proposal.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julia Green. I'm the homeowner, homeowner, along with my husband and our two children. We live in the home. We've been there for 10 years. I just want to thank Ms. Kraut, who's made this process very accessible and less intimidating, and because it's a little difficult as a homeowner. And so I appreciate her. I'm sure you all appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Just briefly, Stephanie went through it, what we're requesting. It's not too complicated. I love this home. I joke that it is my third child because I love it so much, but it requires a lot of work. And these stairs require a lot of work, the wood stairs. We are having trouble maintaining them. The wood is deteriorating every season, and the upkeep is impossible, and it's really affecting the beauty of the home, which is an incredibly beautiful home, and also the safety. It's getting to the point where I'm concerned that one of us is going to step through the stairs. So we selected materials that we hope are consistent with the beauty of the home and the historic nature of the home, but that are more durable. And unless there are any other questions, I don't think I have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. Excuse me, if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I'll turn it over to Sonia Gior to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. Do you have a sign up in advance? Helen Freeman from the Historic Districts Council, and Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Helen Freeman, Historic Districts Council. HTC appreciates, excuse me, HTC appreciates this applicant's efforts and the problem they are trying to solve. We do not, though, believe that this solution is the correct one. We found the precedent images do not support the proposed design, and believe that a well-detailed wood stair remains the appropriate solution for this handsome bungalow. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do not have any other signups in advance, and I don't see any hands raised. So I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board 14 has waived its right to comment on this application, and I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you very much. So Ms. Green, if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard, I think you did show examples of other stone, brick, and/or brick steps in otherwise wood houses in the district. And I think maybe if you could go back to the designation photo, I think that the steps that we are addressing are steps that are new and were approved by the commission when the porch was restored. So there's, okay, so I just wanted to make sure that's clear. And then if you would like to address the materials anymore, please feel free to.
Just, just briefly, I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate this process. I think that I asked for the commission and for those participating to recognize the cost to the homeowners, and I have spent a lot of time working around, walking around the neighborhood and looking at brick and blue stone stairs comparable to mine. So there are, there are many. I've just given some examples, and those homes are still quite beautiful. I have worked very hard to maintain the beauty of this home. I've gone through the landmark process, again, all by myself. I don't have an expediter. I'm not a professional. I'm just figuring this out. Before, we have restored this house to what it should have been. The porch had been enclosed. The stairs were narrow. It was a shell of the beauty it is. So I appreciate the comments. I am very attuned and sensitive to keeping the beauty of the home and the historical nature of it, and the consistency in the neighborhood. And certainly, someone who has lived in this neighborhood for a decade and walked up and down these streets with my children's strollers while I was on maternity leave know every house and their facade, and this is consistent, and I think it maintains the beauty of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi, please go ahead. Commissioner Lutfi, did you have a question?
You're muted.
Thanks, sorry. So this is a question for you, Sarah, and for the staff, and have we approved other entryway steps like this within the district?
That's a good question. Corey?
Yeah, I am, I think several years now, but I do believe either through the course of legalization or a new application, at least once, the commission has determined that a material that is not the original material, such as what the applicant is proposing here, could also be appropriate, in large part because of the context of other houses that do have this, whether original or not, you know, could support that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire?
Two questions, I guess. When was the porch reopened and the front redone?
I can answer that. This is, again, the homeowner, Julia Green. We did that work when we purchased the house in 2012, sometime in the end of 2012 or beginning of 2013, the work.
Since then, how many times have the steps been repainted?
Every, every, after every winter. I'm doing some work on it.
Thank you.
Okay, and when the porch was restored and opened and restored in 2012, were you using, what, were you using any photographic documentation or other documentation to guide you on the details proportions and materials?
So when we did that work, we had an architecture, an architect do the drawings, so our contractor was working off of those drawings. I don't really think I can intelligently speak into materials because of really, through the contractor and the architect.
Okay, okay. So, but it's clear in the tax photo, we don't know what the original stairs would have looked like from the tax photo, so I think there was maybe an assumption that they were wood because it was a different building, but that's also something I think that one can consider that even in the tax photo, I think you can see some masonry stairs on the adjacent building. Okay, other questions? All right, if there are no other questions, I think we'll move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Okay, Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So, so moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And so first, I want to acknowledge the incredible restoration work that you did. The building is much more historically accurate, and, you know, restoring the porch, I think, really enhanced not only this building, but the, you know, the entire streetscape. And so I want to thank you for being such a good steward and taking such good care of your building. And, you know, we did, at the time that we approved the restoration and opening up of the porch, we approved the, these steps, which you're seeking to replace with brick and stone, and there are examples of them elsewhere in the district. So we'll have a discussion about that. Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start this one?
Well, while I think it's unfortunate that the, that this step and the whole system has deteriorated. Looking at the photographic evidence, what it appears to me to be is an issue of the original wood being installed without being back primed. And that introduces rot from the unpainted side of the wood. So painting it on the exterior face 100 times doesn't save it because it's actually deteriorating from the backside. And, and so I'm, you know, I'm sort of on my hobby horse here. The, one of the things that we always, always insist on our specifications is that every piece of wood not only get back primed, but all of the end grain that is touching other pieces of wood gets, gets painted. It obviously didn't happen here, and looking at the cap, actually, on that, on that base, I can see that it's actually tongue-in-groove wood, which, you know, it's always going to be a fight. It's like the side of a boat. It's always going to be trying to have water go through. And so we're in a situation here where, unless it would be completely rebuilt and redone correctly, it would be a losing battle, and therefore, I can say that I can approve the anticipated design reluctantly, crying. There's a tear coming out of my mouth.
Okay, thank you. I do think that, you know, the fact that there are others in the district, I think, helped to at least make that contextual, if not, you know, if not.
It does. It doesn't help me from crying, but, you know, these, these guys have done a, done a big job with this house, and so it's hard to fault them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Same reluctance here as the Commissioner Devonshire.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
No reluctance. I think, I think homeowners, particularly those like this one, who have shown such care and respect for the house, we have to, we have to be able to maintain houses over time in a way that makes it possible, literally possible, to do without extraordinary means. And the fact that stairs like this are also in the district have helped me a lot, and it's a bungalow arts and crafts style, which I think the brick, blue stone kind of fit in nicely. So I think it's, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
So first of all, I really do want to commend the applicant for all of the loving work that you and your husband put through, revealing the beauty of this home, and the fact that you want to continue to maintain it in the best way possible, and in a way that you think makes the most sense. I, I am really torn about this because I happen to own a wooden home, and with wooden steps in a historic district with other homes, you know, like mine, and we all have wooden steps, and we're all dealing with it. And when I look at the photos of the other homes, and I appreciate that there are many homes that have converted to brick, I just don't think they, they look as good. So I think I'm, I'm going to have to say now that I wouldn't approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I think it's unfortunate, and I also understand what it means to deal with wood stairs, front steps that are exposed to the elements. So I think it's unfortunate, but seeing the examples in the area and and kind of looking at the elevation with what they've mocked up, I think it is appropriate and not so terrible. So I can see approving.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I can approve it as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I can approve it as presented as well.
Okay, all right. So I think we do have the votes to approve this as presented. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you read a motion?
Sure. In the matter of 511 East 16th Street in the Dittmas Park Historic District, LPC 22-09901, an application to replace the entrance stairs, I recommend approval. Running that the removal of the existing stairs will not eliminate any significant historic fabric, that the proposed masonry stairs will be well-scaled and simply designed will not detract from any significant architectural features, that the proposed materials of the steps, consisting of brick risers and stone treads, will be in keeping with the material palette of the building, and consistent with materials, front steps found on other houses within the Historic District, that the proposed white wood composite material at the capping elements, the stair walls, will recall the historic painted wood in terms of basic design and details, will be field painted in the same manner that wood is painted. Therefore, will have a discreet presence at the steps, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the Dittmas Park Historic District.
And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Uh, with seven in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
So that's approved. Thank you. Good luck with your building, your house, your home. Third child.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. We'll move to the next item now.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-two dash zero eight nine eight three. An application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, block eight zero two one, lot sixty-four. Uh, one thirteen Warwick Avenue in the Douglasston Historic District. This is a colonial revival style freestanding house designed by John C.W. Cadu and built in nineteen twenty-two. The application is to modify and construct additions and dormers, modify the rear facade, install substitute materials and replace an entrance portico and windows.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Uh, Philip, if you could unmute yourself. Um, I will now give you control of the presentation. Just click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or mouse. Perfect. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Good afternoon. Philip Metropolis. I'm the arc, design architect for this project at one thirteen Warwick Avenue in the Douglasston Historic District. Uh, as mentioned in the introduction, this house was done by, um, designed and built by John C.W. Cadu. Mr. Cadu was a very, uh, accomplished builder and architect in the Douglasston Historic District. Uh, he built approximately thirty-eight aluminum, one thirty-eight buildings, uh, of which sixteen were garages. But the majority of his, uh, buildings were a little more modest. Um, Douglasston is a funny district which, uh, we're broken up into a zero block, which we call the water block, which is a long shore road, a one, and as you get deeper into the further east away from the water, you get into the one hundred, two hundred and three hundred blocks. And subsequently, when you build a property in the first, in the water block and the, in the one hundred block, you need to have five Douglasston, uh, DMA lots, Douglas Manor Association lots, which are twenty feet wide. So they typically look for a hundred by a hundred lots. And then as you move progressively east, you could, there were buildings actually built on forty by a hundred lots. But this particular house is on a, is on, I think it might be a ninety by a hundred, but it's a good, good sized piece of property. Happens to be on incredibly grand section of Douglasston. It is a uh, let's see now where's my, there we go. It is, um, a very short block. There are only three houses on either side of the block. It seems incredibly broad. It's, the, the buildings are all set back pretty well, except for the first house on the corner is, is a newer building, newer, not contributing house, but it, but it has a very grand feeling. It's perfectly situated, se-center, center of the peninsula, up nice and high, above thirty feet elevation. It should be there for the next hundred years, so we're, we're prom, we're hopeful for that and from based on the flood conditions that we may be encountering in the future. But it's, it's a nice high, very flat site. So the homeowner, interesting thing about, about Douglasston, it's a young district. It's on, you know, the first building was built in nineteen oh six, or the first building of the development was done in nineteen oh six. And I, I'm a native of Douglasston, uh, grew up here. And what was interesting is the families that moved to Douglasston stayed in Douglasston and grew, and raised their children in Douglasston and, and then aged in Douglasston. The, the homeowner for this house, previous homeowner, bought it in nineteen seventy-one. So fifty years they owned the property and they were really as steward, stewards of the property. And I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Ca- Chair Carroll losing that, that expression, steward. These people, in their minds, were stewards of the property. The, the owner was a prominent real estate, uh, attorney here in Queens. And he believed he would, did all the right things to maintain his property. He, he put on, when the energy crisis came, he put on triple track storm windows to keep his house warmer. When he got tired of painting, uh, dealing with the wood shingles over and over and over again, he put on aluminum siding and, uh, and capped all of the wood trim in aluminum, thinking that he would be making his life easier. He, uh, just basically, uh, you know, when things started to deteriorate, they would do restoration to the house. But sadly, they, they used an expression which I don't particularly like, which is contractor driven specifications. They let the contractors pick what they did, went to upgrade it. They didn't necessarily work with architects. But at the time, these were the appropriate upgrades to the house, to the property. So I'm gonna let's see. So here today, we're, we're looking, not only are we looking to expand the house, but we want to peel off all of those fifty-year-old renovations and restorations, peel off the aluminum siding, take off the vinyl, uh, surface applied, uh, shutters, remove the metal cake cladding over all of the wood trim, removes the synthetic, the vinyl, railings on top of the porches, front porch that was replaced. Um, take off the triple tracks and, and take out the historic windows and replace with more appropriate materials. Natural wood cedar shingle siding, composite soffits and trims, aluminum clad wood windows, which have been approved in the district in the past, uh, wo- uh, wood porch and rails, uh, on the, on the, on, on top of the front porch, uh, composite exterior wall panels on the sides of the wings, and then true painted shutters, wood shutters that actually going to try to replicate, we're using this, the shutter, the existing shutter from the nineteen forty photograph shows a two-thirds louver and one-third decorative panel, of which we have yet to pick a cutout for the decorative panel. Couple, the additions that we're considering here today are, are enclosing the front porch, uh, slightly enclosing the pushing the front porch out and keeping a covered porch in order to create a vestibule inside, changing this, the one-story wings on either side, which are seriously rotted with termites and need to be, to come down anyway. But we, we removing them and reconstructing them as two-story wi- uh, wings and then a mudroom in the rear and, and a new sliding door in the rear. Let's see. Here's the existing conditions. As you can see, luckily I took a nice, we took nice winter photographs, which you don't get too much trees blocking the views. Um, from streetscape, it looks okay. I mean, the siding could use a cleaning, but it's, it's really a, it was a heavy gauge. You can't even get aluminum siding these days unless it's custom made, but it, it was a heavy gauge siding and it did its job for the, for the period of time that it was, that it was in action. The sunroom, uh, on, the two sunrooms had non-historic replacement windows put in. Whether they were done with or without a permit, I'm not really sure, but they are not really appropriate windows and those are looking to be replaced anyway. There also that front porch, all of the, um, all of the material on the for, front porch was all aluminum clad over the wood trim. So footprint wise, we're modest change to the front, staying back within the twenty-foot setback as required by the city of New York and a modest small mudroom at the rear, removing a covered terrace and then expanding it to be a mudroom and which would hold us powder rooms. On the on the first floor, obviously we're reconstructing the two wings, taking them down to, down to the grade and then reconstructing to expand cellars and so on and so forth. First floor, reconstructing the family room on the, sunroom on, on the, on the left side and then kitchen and dining room on the right side. Second floor, expanding the children's bedrooms on, on, on this left side and then expanding a master suite on the right side. And then attics, just really an addition of attic space, not really accessory space at all, but in, once we lost the gable end windows, with those two new additions, we had to add dormers, dormers at the rear of the building for light and ventilation. So here you can see the side by side of the existing building on the left showing the aluminum siding and the shutters which were, like I said, vinyl half, half and half louver, fake louvers, and then the replacement windows in, on the two wings. And on the right, the proposed, where we would be restoring the shingle, restoring a pin hit, replacing a pin hinge wood shutter, reconstructing the front, front vestibule and then reconstructing the two side wings with a fully glazed ground floor and wood panel below and then the individual windows on the second, on the second floor.
Philip, can I just stop you for one moment?
Sure.
We just want to make sure our live stream is working, um, properly.
Okay.
And so just hang on one moment so that we don't continue and not, uh, not have it available to them all.
Okay, yes, and I'm just, um, on my end, it looks like it's live, but I'm going to stop the live stream for a moment and then restart it.
Okay. How do I go backwards?
Philip, maybe try using your arrow keys on your keyboard?
Instead? Okay, gotcha.
Does that work?
Yes, thank you. Did I miss anything? What's in?
We're, we're still working on it.
No, no, I'm just, I'm reading my text to see if I missed anything.
You're just talking to yourself.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, we are live again on YouTube.
All right.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Not a problem, not a problem. Don't know where I should pick up again, but I guess I can just move to the next page where this is, uh, we can start looking at the gable ends. The exposed chimney, which has a funny, interesting enough, I had to double check it, it does have a taper, the brick chimney that's there does have a slight taper. And you can see the difference between on the left, the existing, these really kind of cheapo Anderson window replacements versus what a historic, historic replacement window would be in the sunroom where it was a full opening and not just, uh, cut out popped into the, into the aluminum siding. Uh, so there are a couple of quarter round windows we're losing, uh, on the gable end when we do these two additions. And the additions will, are the roofs, roof pitch matches the existing roof pitch and is, is, is set down about a foot, foot and a half from the existing ridge. Uh, here is the rear. The rear had a rather unusual situation. We have a stair right in, right in the center and this door is not full height and we're going to be correcting that to where we're adjusting the stairs so that you can get out of that from underneath that staircase with a full height door. And then the small mudroom here and then the change of the sliding doors at the rear. The pre, the building was, uh, previously renovated where this portion of the first floor wing was pushed out to, uh, when they expanded the kitchen, probably in the eighties or nineties. And, um, that just is one feature that's only shown, shows up on the rear. Here's the other gable end, this would be the driveway end. We could see where I partially set back the, the vestibule, the, the mud, um, vestibule expansion so that it doesn't, we still, we maintain a little bit of a covered porch in front. Uh, renderings, again, a little bit of a bird's eye view, but, uh, showing you the, the additions and the changes to the front and the changes to the whole facade as well. Uh, I think right now the existing roof is brown and I apologize, but I think we're sticking with brown right now. All right, here's another view of the rendering. And then, what I've added here, we spoke with the commission to to illustrate what the context is like. And, and as I said earlier, this street is really grand. And I don't know why, I don't know because it's the short distance, maybe just three hundred feet from cor, from corner to corner. But it's just a boulevard and it, it's not a busy street. It's in the middle of the block. Um, and five out of the six homes are, are historic contributing. And then this one house on the corner is a, is a later build and it, and it pushes the front yard line right to the, right to the front. Here's our subject property here on the right. This is the corner. This is a view looking east from West Drive. And here's a view of the other block, Center Drive, looking west with the subject property on the right here. And again, uh, the streetscape below, looking from West Drive and then looking from Center Drive back at the house. So the wings are, are set back from the facade and they'll, they don't at all been, uh, pushed out into the streetscape. Um, here's the, the block itself, sit with our property in the center of the building, to the left of it and to the right of it, obviously on, on either side in the center or the two properties. And then across the street is a, a couple of unusual houses of which you may have, and I think you do have, have definitely seen before the commission before. Um, so, and there are a variety of, of styles as well. Behind the property, um, on the block on Richmond Road, the same block, but behind, we actually have a situation where there is a two-story wing that is of, you know, two stories attached to the one side of the, of the premises. This, one unusual one, this block has the craziest, this house is the craziest side. It's, they call it a two-story wing. They did these funny angles. I have no, it's all the same roof material. I have no idea if it's original or not. I did not verify in the nineteen forty tax photo. Uh, then other, on, on the block in the other corner, you see that there's a two-story wing in the Dutch Colonial Revival that's really not quite as successful as this, as a typical just gable end expansion. For other houses, again, center hall, a center mass structure, there are a couple in the Douglasston that are really prominent. This is, the upper left is a prominent brick house. Uh, the facade is just, you know, it's just gorgeous. It faces the water and it has these flanking matching bays. It's really a rather unusual piece of property. Then, uh, also on West Drive, there's a Dutch Colonial Revival that is a symmetrically, symmetrical building with matching bay, uh, wings on either side of a center mass. And then I, I, I picked out this house, this is probably one of John Cadu's best. It's on the water block, which is the zero block as we call it, so seven Hollywood Avenue. And it's a stucco with slate roof. It's really a lovely, lovely home. It's a big home. And it too has a two-story wing that's flanked, uh, to the center mass, but it's only on one side in this particular location. Um, other examples of two-story wings attached to a center mass. There's, some are good, some are okay, some are not so good, some are really bad. And, but they all exist. They, um, I think actually the lower right corner is probably a property the commission has seen. That was a new building and, uh, all the other properties were all at the time of designation. Uh, and then we have windows, we are talking flat work to be made out of composite material, but yet all of the other materials, the wood side, the siding would be a real wood, uh, cedar, stained cedar siding. So I guess I'll go back and settle at a rendering. And entertain some questions.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at the moment, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I'll turn it over to Sonja Gior to take us through the testimony.
Great, thank you. Do you have a speaker signed up in advance? And that's Helen Freeman from the Historic Districts Council. Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Helen Freeman, Historic Districts Council. HTC believes that this applicant may be on the right track but has not yet reached the destination. Side extensions for this building could work, but need to be more diminutive in their bulk and perhaps less symmetrically fenestrated on the main floor. To be more specific, we find the third floor roof geometry, specifically the gables, to be awkward. Perhaps a flat metal roof would help solve this problem. Alternately, a one-story extension on one side playing against a two-story extension on the other side would allow this project to look more composed and less stiff. The bulk and fenestration of the first floor extensions are also too similar and make it appear as if they contain identical interior functions. Playing with the articulation of the facade to reflect the true use could be a way to enliven and balance the facade. Finally, the proposed front facade, entry portico and vestibule are inappropriate. The original configuration and detailing evident in the tax photo should be recreated. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do not have any other signups for this item. And I don't see any hands raised, so I will note for the record that Queens Community Board eleven recommends approval with a request for the floor area for each floor to be added to the plans and for the total to be shown. And I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you very much. Philip, would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
Uh, sure. Yes, I would. Thanks. Um, first of all, I, I consider what HTC, uh, reported high praise when we, we, uh, related to some of the other things I've heard them say about Douglasston projects. But, um, that being said, uh, we considered, sure, yes, we definitely considered some alternate roof configurations. The flat roof isn't appropriate. Douglasston has a, has been enforcing a deed restriction where they say if, if, if you're going to have a flat roof, it has to be a porch with a door leading out to it and a porch with a door leading out to it, and that really is not appropriate here. And I, and I haven't really seen any good examples of flat roofs on top of two story additions in the, within the district. Um, as far as the front porch, uh, I'm sorry that it doesn't read in the drawings, but the intention is of course to detail this particular front porch and portico in the manner which it was originally built with the proper uh, crown setbacks, trim and fascia boards. So that is our goal, we're to do a post and rail, top and bottom rail, picket, wood, you know, square wood picket rail on top of the porch. So it is our intent to detail it exactly that way. If it doesn't illustrate, that's sad, just a sad miscommunication. Um, and as far as the function, you know, this is a centered house. I mean, we looked at it and it just, to me, it just reads, this is, you know, it's a center mass, it's always been centered, it's always been, it's on this broad block, it, it, I don't, for a change, I don't see anything wrong with being a little stiff. So, and as far as what, what are the different activities behind the fully glazed first floor wings? Yes, everyone's living behind the first floor, the glazing on the first floor. So I don't see that as necessary, uh, as a necessary justification that the windows have to represent what's happening behind it. So, um, so I, I think, uh, I think for what this property is, when where this property is, the center mass seems appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, I don't see any, but I just wanted to ask, right before we get into discussion, a couple of questions. I know your roof line is a foot or a foot and a half below the roof line on the main house, right? Ridge line? And how far back is, are the wings set from the front facade?
Well, right now the wings match the content, the context of where the original wing was removed. It's about a foot and a, just, just under a foot and a half back, maybe 12 inches back.
Okay. And in some of the examples you showed of houses with two story wings, some of them did have flat roofs, but I understand that there's a problem with the deed restrictions on that. But did they have roof lines that were at a different slope or angle than the main house?
Well, let's take a look. Um, you know, like I said, yes, I'm sure they did, and that doesn't make them look right either. I mean, I, this is a, it's a framers, these, all these, all these 1920s houses were, a lot of them were detailed by the framers. The framers had the expertise of what to do on these houses. And um, I think that's one more page I wanted to go to. Yeah, here's this page. Like this, sure, this has a lower slope roof, this one has a lower slope roof, but these again are Dutch Colonials. They have a little bit more intersecting roofs happening underneath them. Um, this one has a pretty bulky addition on that, but, but I don't see that really as being a sensitive addition to it either.
Okay, and then the second from the left on the top photograph, right, that is a shallower roof line than on the main roof, correct?
Could be, yes, could be. Okay, could be.
Okay.
Again, what happens is you lose that parallel line, like up here, the lines start to get, become oblique, that section of that little, that exposed portion of the gable end becomes a, rather than a parallel face, it becomes an irregular angle. And I, I guess that's, you know, personal preference, it makes me crazy, but, but yes, it's been done, but.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Chavon has a question as well, so please go ahead.
Yes, could you just comment on your decision to extend the portico to bring it out from the building? Uh, instead of leaving the historic configuration of the door there?
Absolutely. Um, everybody loves a vestibule. So we are looking to create a vestibule. Uh, it's a center hall. Uh, maybe if I can go back to the first floor plan, that might help as well. But the center hall, you open the front door and you're dumped right into the center hall. And uh, it's, this is a grand house and I think a grand house deserves, deserves a transition. You have to, you have to go through the motions of, I'm out, I'm gonna, I step onto the porch and I'm sheltered. I get to open the door and I come in, I can remove my coat, I'm still not in a heated space 100%. I'm, you know, transitioning into the warm space, step through the vestibule door. And then you're into the hall, you're into the main space. And we have, and we've created a hall closet, there's no hall closet in this current house. So it's just a matter of the, the process of which, we're just trying to make it more home-like and that's what we're looking to do. And it's not, it's not, it's not atypical uh, in many of the homes. Some, even some of the smaller homes have vestibules when you walk in. So, and it gets pretty cold and breezy on the peninsula in the, in the harsh winters, January and February, the winters when it's, when the nor'easter is blowing. So, so, you know, just looking to create a buffer.
Thank you.
Okay, other final questions? Okay, I don't think we have any other questions, so we'll move to our discussion and Commissioners, I'm sending you requests to unmute yourselves. Right, and Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And um, this is, as we've been presented, an application for two additions on either side as well as changes to the fenestration and the entrance way of pushing out the portico and creating a exterior vestibule. So we'll begin that discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. Um, I think that in general, the application is a good one. Uh, the change, you know, the version to the original historic material, the historic shutters, the windows. I think the vestibule is appropriate. I, I think that he has to work with staff to refine the details of the portico. I think that the reconstruction of the first floor sunrooms on the left and right are appropriate. I think that the um, second floor additions above those are too high. I think the ridge line has to come down. Look at most of the examples, not all, but most of the examples that he showed of of second floor side yard additions, they were mostly lower. Uh, this is a little bit, because it's so close to the front wall of the house, the mass of those wings is much more um forceful in its reading of the, of the house's volume than it would be if, let's say the sunrooms were smaller and more towards the center. Um, so I would suggest either uh, dropping the eve down to below the first, the second floor window and having the second floor window be a dormer, as was shown on one of the, one of the examples. Um, or um, you know, the flat roof idea was discussed and dismissed because of the the deed, deed restriction. Um, it may be possible to make, make the additions smaller front and back and have small terraces in front and back. I, I think there are many options about it, but I would say that ridges should drop significantly.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree completely with Commissioner Goldblum and especially about the two side wings.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Same thing here, the massing and the roof lines need to be reduced in the porch.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Uh, yeah, the issue is the, the two additional stories on the wings. Um, I think the idea of bringing down the ridge line is an interesting one. If there's a dormer, because it's coming down that long, it would be a shed dormer, I think, not a gable dormer, of course. Um, uh, so I don't know if we want to see this again or leave it to the staff to work out. I'm not sure, it's kind of in between. Um, it's an important issue, though, maybe we should see it again.
Yeah.
And then for me, I think the, the way the uh, the vestibule has been added is appropriate, and I think that can be done as long as the original details are reincorporated in some way.
Okay, Commissioner Lefei?
I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think it's about the roof line on either side that it needs to come down. At, this project seems very close. Um, and I agree about the materiality being, you know, working well. Um, so that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I agree with everything that's been said and especially Michael Goldblum's suggestions. Um, and I do think that maybe we should see it again. Um, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Chavon?
Yeah, I think in general, it's a very nice project and of course, very welcome with restoration. I agree with Commissioner Goldblum's comments. And uh, I think that it would be nice if those unusual side windows could also be exposed as, as part of the project, though that's not essential. So, yeah, uh, in general, I can approve of it except for the changes that were recommended.
Okay. All right, so I think this is very close. I think it's very designed well and has, I think the commission has felt that its details and materials are very sympathetic and so I think we just are talking about how we can make these side wings to be a little more um, secondary and uh, because they're only set back a foot or a foot and a half from the front facade. The place that the commission has really focused has been on the ridge line and lowering that in some way. There have been a few different suggestions on how to do that, so we'll ask you to think about that and come back to us with a revised proposal to address that, those that outstanding um issue with the massing of the additions and the resulting details. Okay, so we'll take no action today and we'll see you back when you're ready. Thank you.
Okay, well now move to public meeting item, I'm sorry, public hearing item number four, LPC 23-00447. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 646, Lot 57. 421 West 13th Street in the Gansford Market Historic District. This is a neo-renaissance style warehouse building designed by Hans E. Mayen and built in 1901 to 02. The application is to replace the entrance landing.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Staff is going to take you through the presentation. Tim, if you could unmute yourself, I will uh, provide added control of the presentation for you. Please click on your screen and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Timothy Shaw, Preservation Staff. 421 West 13th Street is a warehouse building located on the north side of West 13th Street between Washington Street and Ninth Avenue in the Gansford Market Historic District. I'll go back to the first slide. You can see here, a storefront was installed at the eastern portion of the building in 1937, seen in the tax photo, and the existing storefront on the right with a concrete ramp and steps which are not code compliant, was installed prior to designation. The commission staff issued a staff level permit in June of this year for the replacement of the storefront infill. This is the proposed approved elevation uh, with new steel infill between the historic piers, which are to be exposed as and restored as needed and with a new restorative cornice above. This work also included the removal of the non-compliant concrete ramp and the installation of an interior ramp with an et grade entrance at the eastern side of the infill. The application before you today is for the removal of the existing entrance landing and its replacement with new concrete steps and metal handrails leading from the new storefront entrance. This was not included in the staff level approval as our rules do not allow for this type of installation at a warehouse building. Anita Brandt, the architect for the application, will now briefly explain a bit more about the proposed design and the history of the space.
Uh, and just to be clear, it's that the rules don't, it's that there's no rule for it, that's the problem, right?
Correct.
So it's not that they don't meet the rules, it's just that there is no rule to, for this type of work.
Yes, thanks for the clarification.
Uh, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good, sorry. Uh, yes, thank you, Timothy. You really covered it pretty thoroughly. I, I just wanted to uh, share with you that uh, it's unusual, but this particular family, the Millman family, has owned this property for the past 60 years and they continue to manage it, own and manage it. And for the past 90 years, they've been working in the Gansford District, so uh, these are originals. Um, if we could go to the first slide, please, LPC 1. I just wanted to point out that the photograph, the 1940s photograph, Tim, there you go. Um, if you look on the left side there, uh, I think it's interesting to see that it was at that time a restaurant. And um, uh, to this day, it is also a restaurant. So a little uh, different than the use of most of the original uses. Uh, LPC 3, uh, page um, shows uh, the ramp on the sidewalk. And LPC 4 shows the uh, modification that's currently um, being done, which is an extensive structural work, putting the ramp inside and creating a vestibule easily accessible. Um, the work that we are, are we on four? Okay, great. Um, the building is undergoing these upgrades to create safer, more code compliant and of course, more beautiful uh, streetscape, including this new storefront and removing the exterior ramp. On LPC 6, um, the landing before us is the last piece to improve the access to and egress from this rather large restaurant. Um, in summary, our proposal is to correct the risers and tread dimensions um, to make them comfortable and safe. Uh, the landing and handrail to minimally intrude onto the sidewalk. And finally, to um, our choice of materials, which is steel and concrete, are similar to the other landings on this side of the street, in fact. So there are many, many of these. Um, unless there's any questions, I thank you, but I'm available for anything you'd like to ask.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I'll turn it over to Sonia Giorgio to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. So we do not have any speakers signed up in advance for this item. Let me just see if any hands are raised. I am not seeing any hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board 2 recommends approval of the stair, landing, railing and ramp, um, which the board says is a considerable improvement over the existing ramp. And I'll turn it back to you, Chair Carol.
Thank you, Sonia. All right. Um, if there are no final questions, I think we can move to our discussion. So I'm going to send you all a request to unmute. And we'll get there. Okay, Commissioner Devonshire, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so uh, hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so this is a proposal to create a new set of stairs and handrail at the entry. The storefront infill itself has already been approved at staff level. And um, the removal of the existing uh, ramp is also approved at staff level. So this is to replace that with this stair and handrail and the applicant has shown examples and staff have shown examples of other stairs in this historic district at different building types. Okay, so we'll begin that discussion. Commissioner Chavon, would you like to start this one?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, I, I actually um, I think I find this appropriate. Uh, I don't really, um, you know, I think it's a it's, you know, fairly simple, it's needed and um, I don't, I don't really have a problem with it. I think it's okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think the uh, the curved stair posts are uh, a bit, a bit much for this building. a bit, a bit much for this building, but I don't think it renders it inappropriate. I think it's just a little quirky flourish that people might appreciate as they walk by on the street. I think it's something.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Yes, an unnecessary flourish, but approvable.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Agree with the majority, agree with the comments.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
Unnecessary, but a delightful flourish. It's good and it's also, of course, reversible over time if this begins to look dated or strange after some point of time.
Okay. Then Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree, it's approvable.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I do as well, appropriate.
Okay, so I think we have the consensus to approve. Commissioner Chapin, would you make the motion?
Yeah, I'm interested, our motion says it's utilitarian and I agree, it's a little fanciful, but fine. Okay, thank you. In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough Manhattan, LPC 23-00447, 421 West 13th Street, Gansford Market Historic District, and neo-renaissance style warehouse building designed by Hans E. Mayen and built in 1901 to 1902. Application is to replace the entrance landing. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Gansford Market Historic District. That I recommend approval, finding that the existing landing and railings are not historic and their removal will not result in the loss of any significant architectural features of the building or the site. That the presence of landing will be in keeping with loading docks found at buildings with similar age and style found elsewhere within the historic district. That the simple design of the concrete landing and steps will not detract from the significant architectural and historical details of the building or streetscape, and that the utilitarian design will be in keeping with simply designed by and being found elsewhere within the historic district.
All right, muted. Yep, Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
So that's approved, thank you, we'll move to the next item.
Right, the next item is public hearing item number five, LPC 22-11747. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 592, lot 63, 138 Waverly Place in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a church rectory designed by George H. Streaton and built in 1895. And the application is to install fencing at the areaway and stoop and a light fixture.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Jason, if you could unmute yourself? I'm going to provide you access to the presentation. If you can click on your screen, you can dance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Jason Gross, I'm architect for the project with Skorsky and Associates. The proposal today is included as part of a facade restoration project, but today's presentation is specifically related to the replacement of a sconce light fixture and replacement of an areaway wrought iron fence and stoop gates at 138 Waverly Place. The existing stoop gate was installed after designation and would be replaced with an improved design. The stoop is facing Waverly Place, it is close to Sixth Avenue and across from Gay Street. It's a high-traffic area, day and night. The gates and fencing are necessary to provide security to the building and to prevent people from congregating or sitting on the steps and walls or going down into the basement entry. The wall alone does not meet code for fall protection, so a fence is necessary. The basement areaway is a narrow passage and it's obstructed by solid walls, so this is an enticing place for people to hide. The building was built in 1895 as a rectory serving St. Joseph's Church and it is still occupied today by the Franciscan Priors of the Atonement. It serves as a religious and community service function. The building is low-rise, brick and brownstone, Gothic Revival style, but sandwiched between two taller multiple dwellings. We are not part of a row. This is a unique building and it would not set a precedent for single-family homes with stoops and gates. 133 West 4th Street was a similar request for a stoop gate at a parish house and that was approved by the Commissioners last week. Okay, here you will see the other buildings on the block, which include, like I said, multiple dwellings as well as a row of houses. All the buildings do have fences protecting their yards and the multiple dwellings at the end of the block also have gates and stoop gates. Buildings across the street, again, fences and gates. Buildings affiliated with St. Joseph's, which you'll see toward the lower right, are the school, the church, and also a rectory that's along Sixth Avenue and the next block up, high fences and gates. And here is a close views of the buildings at the end of the block, which are the multiple dwellings, as well as the school on the next block over, originally affiliated with St. Joseph's. Okay. The first portion of the request is related to a sconce light fixture. The owners would like to go with something a little bit more interesting than the lantern, so they've selected a dragon base. The new fixture base is in a recess and it's connected to the existing wiring at an existing location. This design is meant to connect with the Gothic style of the building, a little bit better than the existing lantern. And even though this community board did have concerns about the globe shape of the illuminated part, you'll see that it's common in the district, including the building directly next door. And the globe-type fixture would provide light in all directions, which would be a further deterrent to people who are congregating in any shadows. Here you can see the before and after, the lantern and the dragon. So the second part of the request is related to the areaway fence and stoop gate. The height of the fence is designed to match the top of the upper portion of the stoop's knee wall. So here's another view where you can see the upper level of the knee wall here and that the top of the pickets of the fence will match that level. You can see that the main facade uses horizontal lines to separate the floors. The proposed fence includes a horizontal decorative wrought iron and that will continue from the areaway wall to the lower portion of the stoop walls, all at the same level. So we would have an alignment between the wall and these little small pieces of fence at the stoop, lower portion of the knee wall. That's necessary to prevent people from just climbing over. So the construction drawings of the proposed, just being proposed. Here's another view of the side looking towards Sixth Avenue and here looking back toward Seventh Avenue. The existing basement window guards provide the inspiration for the decorative elements of the proposed fence and gates. The fence will also include a bracket in the back, which will support removable planters for flowers and low grasses. It is behind the fence, similar to other front yards on the block, and this will serve as an additional deterrent to anyone thinking of climbing over the fence using the stoop wall or wall as a step to get over. It is important to note that none of the proposed alterations will remove or alter any historic fabric. All work proposed is easily removable in the future in a way that will not require damage or alteration to the structure. And that is the conclusion of the request.
Thank you very much. And we do have some questions. Commissioner Chapin, please go ahead.
You're replacing the light in the areaway as well? Are we going to just replace a similar light or is that different? It looks like just the same light?
And the areaway, I think they just have like a jelly jar light. There's no, nothing proposed at this time to change that light. They maybe use it when they take the trash out.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was going to be the same, that's all, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
Being that security is a big issue for you here. I was just wondering if, and so you've made the fence high, maybe higher than it would, it normally should be aesthetically. I was just wondering if it came up to the level of the sidewall of the steps, the lower level? Would that be, would that be secure enough, do you think?
Not really, that's kind of where it is now. And it hasn't stopped people from going up and over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I don't see other questions yet at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand and I will turn it over to Sonia Giorgi to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. All right, we do have one speaker signed up and that's Helen Freeman from the Historic District Council. Helen, I'll be promoting you to panelist now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Helen Freeman, Historic District Council. HTC finds this application to be in need of further refinement. In particular, we object to the removal of the medallion over the front door and the height of the proposed ironwork. We believe the ironwork should rise no higher than the level of the building's current water table or basement level. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. We don't have any other speakers signed up, well, I see that we have a hand raised, so Christina Conroy? I'm promoting you to panelist now. And if you can please unmute your line and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the VSNY has no problem with the removal of the existing carriage lamp-style light fixture above the main entrance if it's no longer functional. However, we find the proposed 12-inch shatterproof white plastic globe to be an inappropriate substitution. It appears too bright, the shape is obtrusive, and it will call undue attention to itself. Now, carriage lamp-style fixtures with a black finish are still manufactured in many sizes. We urge the applicant to source one close to the appearance of the existing feature. The installation of the proposed stoop has us confused. There is no stoop gate visible in the designation photos. There is an open LPC violation issued in 1986 for ongoing work without permits, but it doesn't list a stoop gate. And we didn't see any stoop gate permit listed on the drawings. However, if the existing gate is legal, we find its removal will not destroy any historic material and the proposed gate to be more sympathetic to the architecture of the building. But we strongly objected the proposal to extend the existing areaway fence from 3' 6" tall to 6' tall. The existing areaway window and door grills appear to be quite sturdy. In addition, there are other ways, such as motion detectors that can augment the grills in a less obtrusive fashion and which do not give this building the appearance of a fortress, New York. We urge the applicant to reconsider this very obtrusive fence. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do not have any other speakers signed up and I'm not seeing any additional hands raised. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board 2 recommends approval of the areaway gate, fence, and gate and recommends denial of the lighting fixture citing concerns over the design's lack of harmony with the existing lantern. And I'll pass it back to you Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you very much. And just to address the question from the Victorian Society about the existing gate on the stoop that is, is not permitted by the commission and it is something that the staff has been working with the owner to address and this application is a part of a proposal to address that condition and should something not be approved, our enforcement department would take the appropriate steps depending on the commission's action today. Okay, so now I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you would like to respond to the comments about the design size of the light fixture as well as the height and design of the fencing. Mr. Gross, would you like to?
Yes.
Yes.
Just one clarification, we are not going to be removing the medallion above the door. So that maybe just the rendering wasn't, didn't depict it, but it will be restored as part of the already approved at staff level facade project. As to the light fixture, the owners of the building wanted to have something more interesting than a carriage lantern. They liked the fact that the building is sort of a Gothic or castle-like structure. They are Franciscans, so they, you know, like animals and nature and they wanted something that would be complimentary, like I said, to the kind of medieval look. So the dragon was what came, what came to mind and this fixture is not very large. In reality, it has just a little bit more character than an average lantern. As far as the fence, we understand that it's tall. It's taller than maybe some others on the block, but keep in mind that we do have solid knee walls that continue up and the stairs going down do provide a place for people, even if they're not trying to break into the building. They're trying to use the areaway for, you know, other things that would be undesirable in a residential for priests situation. We know that the stoop wall has become, you know, somewhat of a latrine over the past year or so, so just giving the building the look that you shouldn't mess with it as opposed to what's there now where people jump over or climb around or hang out is what we're going, this basically, that's the request here, is to increase security but be sensitive to the design and complement the Gothic architecture of the building.
Okay. Okay. So Commissioners, are there any final questions? All right, I'm going to send you all a request to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. All right, and Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. We've got a few components here. We have the light fixture, the, and the gate and the stoop, and then the ironwork slash planters atop the cheek walls and areaway wall. And I would say for the light fixture, the commission and the staff, the commission has rules that allow the staff to approve light fixtures. They don't prescribe a design. We don't require that someone do a carriage lantern type of design. Our criteria and even our sort of policy at public hearing has been to look at the size, the finish, and whether or not it detracts from the building. So this is, I think, about 2 feet tall, including the globe and the metal fixture. And I think it looks like 1' 5" deep, but it is set within a recessed opening. And then there's the question of the stoop gate, as we've heard, we saw an application last week for another former rectory building that was seeking a stoop gate. And we approved it noting that in this particular historic district, as well as a couple of other historic districts, we have on occasion approved gates on stoops where the building is not part of a row and not part of a consistent rhythm of traditional stoops. At a stoop gate that is sensitively designed and low in height could be found appropriate. And so we did that last week as the applicant noted. And that is one way to think about the gate that's being proposed to you today in addition to its design and materials. And, and then there's the fencing, which bring the areaway perimeter up to 6 feet. And then that fencing is wrapped around to create planters as well on the cheek walls of the stoop. So we have the light fixture, the gate, and then the overall fencing and the overall height. So we'll begin that discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Sure. You know, it's difficult in a very busy area.
I can appreciate the desire to try to make sure that there aren't a lot of incursions into the area
Yes, sir. Can't talk alone.
of the building. Um, I, overall, I think the design of the fence works. It's, it's very attractive and it, it's not overpowering in any way. So from that standpoint, I think it works. I do think it can come down a little bit. I don't have a problem with the height of the fence at the stairwell. But I think it does need to come down a little bit as it wraps around toward the side of the building. And since, and I, and I am okay with the fence as a planter. I think it, I think that works.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I, I think it's all right to replace the light fixture, although I, I bet there's an even cooler light fixture that they can find that still has an animal motif and maybe a different kind of shape. I, I think they could find something that's even better. But I think it is appropriate to replace the one that exists. I am actually in support of this tall fence. I think that the building can take it. I think that the windows and this kind of Gothic feel allows for a sort of a more severe front and one that's kind of taller like the windows. And I think that the area, the stoop and the fence in sort of continuation of that same language and material will be better than the one that's currently there. So I think I can support the project as it's presented.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with Commissioner Shamir Baron on this one. I think, I think that although it's quite small because of the institutional nature of the building and the way it works with the rest of the fencing in the front, I think it's, I think it works and it's, it's okay. I can approve it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Not for me. I, I think it's too high. I think it should, I think the main fence should come down to about five feet, maybe 4' 6". And I think that the fence that's on the knee walls for the stairs is just not a good thing.
Okay. Commissioner Devonshire?
I think the fence around the areaway should come down to the height of the cheek wall at the, at the stair, which would make it still slightly higher than the stair fence, the light fixture. It's okay.
Okay, and then the sort of planter railings on the cheek walls of the stoop?
No.
Okay. Okay. He agrees, or she?
Yeah, I, I agree with the majority. You know, I, I can go with a D as, as is, but I think the majority seems to want the fence to be slightly lowered. And I have no problem with that. And I think the lighting, as I said correctly, there may be other better choices, but for now, this is approvable.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Well, let's just see where that majority is. I think I'm with Addie and Diana to complicate the counting there. That the, in this special case, a one-off on a very large institutional house, it can take this larger fence. So I'm okay with the fence as it's been proposed, as well as on the cheek wall. And again, I think if they can find a, a better light, maybe they should look. But if not, then I think this could be called acceptable.
Okay. All right, so we have three who support it as presented and two who specifically say the fence should be lowered and, and the planter fence should be removed from the cheek wall. So I just want to, Commissioner Lutfi, ask you, I know you had thought about, you said they could lower the areaway. And I just wanted to sort of understand the areaway fence, understand if that was an absolute necessary adjustment for you. Or, and if so, how does that then relate to the planters and what you think about the, the, you know, how would you have a fence relate to the planters on the cheek walls?
Um, so I don't think they should come down to four feet, actually. I think they could come down a foot, the fence, and I think it would still serve its purpose.
So then it would be lower than the planters on the cheek walls. That's, that's, I guess what I'm getting at.
Right. So, but if it came down a foot, could, I, and I don't, I'm not, what's the height of the cheek wall?
Um, I think it's, and the lowest portion is four feet high. And then there's the planter on top of it, which brings it up to six feet, which would align with the overall height of the areaway fence. So, so if you wanted the fence to come down to five feet, it would be somewhere in the middle of the planter. So they wouldn't align. That's.
Right, that's the problem. Okay. So that idea doesn't work.
So I think either you can join the group that are okay with the design all being sort of unified or the two commissioners who think that the fence should come down and the planters be eliminated.
I think I'm going to have to join the group that thinks that it's okay.
Okay. All right, so then Commissioner Chen, that gives the majority who are okay with it as is. Is that, and I know you said you were comfortable with the majority.
Yes, I am comfortable with that, given the circumstances.
Okay. Okay, so I actually think in the end we have, we have enough to make a motion to vote to approve. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you make that motion? And we'll see where we come out.
In the matter of docket 22-11747, 138 Waverly Place, Greenwich Village Historic District, a church rectory designed by George H. Streaton and built in 1895. The application is to install fencing at the areaway and stoop and light fixture. I know that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District's extension 2. I recommend approval binding, that the work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the building is between two apartment buildings, neither of which have a stoop or areaway and is not part of a row. Therefore, the proposed work will not disrupt the unity of the streetscape, that the fencing and gates will address safety concerns associated with fall hazards at the stoop and security concerns arising from an easily accessed deep areaway partially screened by masonry walls, that the fencing and gates will be anchored at plain masonry and the light fixture will be at a modern infill panel, that the light fixture will replace an existing fixture, reusing existing electrical conditions, and will be well scaled to the facade and typical in terms of a difference above an entrance, and that the design of the installations will be compatible with the new Gothic details of the building.
Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Nay.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
So seven in favor and one opposed, the motion passed.
Okay, so that's approved. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number six, LPC 23-00987, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 584, lot 57, 39 Commerce Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a late federal-style house built in 1831 to 32, later altered in the French Second Empire style in the early 1870s by DT Outwood. The application is to install a rooftop skylight.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. They now have control of the presentation. You just need to advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. And the project team may begin. Please state your name for the record.
Sorry, Jonathan Kaplan, Kaplan Colaco Architects. And Monty, are you there? No, okay, we're having, he's joining us in this room. Here he comes. And Mary Kay, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
One sec, well, here we are.
Okay, so this is Monty. I'm sorry, I was in the other, in my computer, but I'm having difficulty. Can we make Jonathan to control the screen?
Sure.
Possible.
Okay, Jonathan, if you just click on your screen.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, so we're Kaplan Colaco Architecture. We primarily work with artists, collectors on artist studios, residences, galleries, and museums, largely in New York. We've worked on several townhouse renovations in Greenwich Village and throughout the city. And we are working on this with Mary Kay Judy as Architectural Conservator and Historic Preservation Consultant on the project. The, you will give in historic context and building history explaining precedent for proposed, or proposed addition, skylight addition, and appendix with mechanical equipment, which we're also proposing, and a small bathroom skylight and roof hatch. The site location is in the Greenwich Village Historic District, which you see here. The site location is at the median of Commerce and Barrow, off of Hudson and 7th Avenue South. 41 and 39 Commerce, which will, so 41 to the left and 39 to the right. We've, the scope of work is a new skylight, which would be on the top of 39, and the precedent being its sister building, which is on 41, which is already has an existing skylight from, we'll get to like 1930s more or less, and as well as proposed roof hatch, mechanical equipment. Skylight has limited visibility and mechanical equipment would not be visible. And we'll come to, we've done mockup and setup for that, and we'll get to that. 30, 39 also is to have exterior restoration. This has already been approved and will include full facade restoration, roof replacement, new windows. And, and this will also, this isn't intended use as for an artist as a home studio on the third floor. So the skylight is actually to bring in north-facing skylight. And we look at the tradition of north-facing skylights from Picasso, Picasso's studio, Bateau Lavois in Paris, which was a precedent, and also Brancusi's studio, which are kind of well-known precedents of these north-facing skylights, which is often called a Paris skylight. And so keeping alive the tradition of one of the best natural lighting conditions for an artist's studio. And then looking how that came into being in New York and, and looking at the, at Row House Forborn by Andrew Scott Dolcardt and his discussion in 2009, early in the 20th century, significant change occurred in the residential character of New York's Greenwich Village. And between 1915 and 1930, hundreds of old row houses into apartment buildings, often with fashionable artist's studio apartments, which very often these skylights were addressing, most notably Edward Hopper's studio and High and Gross, LaGuardia Place, Hopper Studio at 1 Washington Square. So then we were looking also at the commerce historic maps. Again, it's High and Gross and Edward Hopper's studio here. And looking at Sanborn maps and development of the area. And the, and looking at the streetscape and unique configuration, unexpected views. It's very pleasing. These two buildings are very pleasing, very interesting in keeping the quality and, you know, the star quality and beauty of these buildings. And that's part of this restoration project. And then we're looking at some of historic photos on page 14. You can see in the, from between 1922 and 1937, in 1937, the Bernice Abbott photo in the middle, we see the skylight. And so that's on 41, which is really the sister building, as it's often referred to in, in this case. And then even looking at census records back from 19, in the 20s, artists and writers were even occupied the building at that time. So I would just say that, you know, one of the things that contributes to the village's particular characters, it's openness to new people and ideas, this capacity to evolve, express in all sorts of ways in which the architecture involvement of the neighborhood. For instance, 39 and 41 changed at the end of 19th century from a two-story building to a three-story one. The mansard roof was added in the 1870s. And then in the 1920s, how, how the 41, the third story subsequently changed into a skylit space. This building, together with 39, were and still are sometimes known as the twin buildings because of the striking similarities between the two detached structures. 41 Commerce Street, addition of the skylight somewhat compromised its distinctive harmony, and the addition of a skylight to 39 will reintroduce the pleasing resemblance between the two houses, thereby maintaining the architectural, cultural, and historical continuity of the area, which is interrelated, interrelated traditions of skylit, skylit top floors and artist's studios.
We'll speak about the design. As we can see, 39 Commerce, we did the restoration of 41 a few years back. 39 Commerce probably was neglected for the past 30 years. The cornice is in a terrible shape. The windows are in terrible shape. We already have approval for, from staff level to replace all the windows. The cornice, the roofing bring the building back to the glory days. The history Jonathan spoke, you know, that the skylight on 41 was added. And before we jump to the design, now showing, showing the design, we see here on, on top, it's existing photographs and below renderings. We can see 41 Commerce and 39 is in the background. We tried to simulate the rendering, showing the 41 Commerce skylights, and then showing on the background the 39. There, in the proposed application, we have also a roof hatch, a small skylight over the bathroom, and two mechanical units that are all the way on the back or on the rear. So they're not visible, and we'll see in the mockup. As we can see from the mockup, and we'll see pictures after this, this is the skylight. But it's, it will have the exact same proportions as 41 Commerce facing north. This is the roof, proposed roof hatch, the two units on the rear. And then there is another small skylight over the bathroom. And we can see also in plan the size of the skylight and the roof hatch, one skylight and the two rooftop units. Looking at the mockup that was prepared, as we can see, yes, the skylight is visible. As soon as you step further back from Barrow, the closer you get towards the building, the less visible it is. And as soon as you turn Commerce around the corner, it's almost not visible. And the streets, I mean, the trees. And the streets, I mean, the trees do obstruct the view. But it's especially looking, you know, from further back, when we see the two, especially the two buildings, they are identical, just a mirror image with the garden in between. I think it completes, you know, the entire streetscape. Those are just proposed elevations on the left, existing, showing the skylight on forty-one and the proposed, I mean, the existing without the skylight and just showing the sizes and the shape of the skylights, that they are going to be identical. Speaking a little bit about the floor plan, since we said the skylight that was set it from between nineteen twenties and thirty-eight. It was used as a studio back then, and it's used most likely as a studio today. What we are proposing is the same thing on thirty-nine Commerce instead of a bedroom. This will be a later application to change the interior. But the, the idea is to have the same skylight facing north, so this space can be used as the studio. It's painting studio. Going to the next page. Okay, those are just building sections showing, you know, size and shape of the skylight. Looking, you know, all the way from back on the street, the section, it's because Commerce turns the corner. So this shows the peak of the skylight because it's a little bit misguided. It's not like that kind of a mess. But if we see the other section, if we, if we cut east-west, I will call it. It's a true north-facing skylight with the units all the way on the rear and the roof hatch. Going a little bit deeper, existing condition, on the left, we have the existing skylight from forty-one Commerce, which again, built twenties, probably renovated. And if I had to guess, maybe forty, fifty years ago, what they did is they took the roof tar and they just brought it all the way up. So it has the same finish, most likely will need at some point to be dealt with. But again, this is not our project at the moment. And now on the right, we see pictures of four, of thirty-nine Commerce, and the proposed skylight will go roughly in this location. As, as I mentioned earlier, the building is in dire need of repair. I mean, everything is kind of falling apart, but I think we are in the process of starting that renovation soon. Speaking about materials, the proposed materials is still keeping with the language. I mean, the size, shape will match forty-one. The only difference will be, we are not proposing to take the same roofing finish of the skylight. We are proposing a standing seam. It will be a patented zinc, the color to be gray matte to match the other skylight. And the glazing will be just a clear insulated glazing. I mean, we are going to achieve, you know, two things, a kind of unite the buildings on the same time. And on the meantime, you know, have a more energy-efficient skylight than the other side. And I'll just go through the appendings. Those are, you know, the typical skylight that is over the bathroom. This is the roof hatch. And this is the AC units, two of them that are going to go on top of it if they are proposed.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions?
I don't see any questions at this time, so let's see if we have public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Sonia Gior to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. So we do have a hand raised for this item, Christina Conroy, and I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay, good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Victorian Society can support this application for the proposed rooftop skylight at thirty-nine Commerce Street. The work will not require the removal of significant historic material. It will be partially concealed by the existing parapet. It is located in a district where studio windows have been a typical alteration for a hundred years. But most importantly, there is an actual historic precedent for the construction of a studio window at the Twin House at forty-one Commerce Street. This is a rare proposal for a visible addition, which will slip seamlessly into the district, and we urge approval. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you. So we do not have any other sign-ups. And I am not seeing any hands raised at the moment. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval of the new skylight, provided that the metal plating is painted to match the color of the skylight of the matching building. And I'll turn it back to you Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you very much. So the testimony was very supportive, but there was a comment from the community board about the color. So do you want to address that?
Yes, we'll submit to the staff the color and even take a sample from the roof next door so that we can closely match. And as I said earlier, it will be a patented zinc matte finish, so it should be close in color. It will be very close. We can submit a sample, we have samples already in the office.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, are there any final questions? I am sending you all requests to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion to construct a visible skylight on the roof of this building that will match the studio window on the twin building adjacent to it. So let's begin that discussion. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So very nice to see that there is precedent, and I'm so excited that we are getting to see this. Because it's, there's a focus of intention here. It's not overblown competition. It's not overly ambitious. It's what it's supposed to be, it seems to me. And I think it's visibility, you know, it does something strange a little bit to the building, I would say. Seeing it, if one can really see it from, from these elevational shots, which we really can't exactly. But I think it suits the historic program, if we can speak about that. And it suits the district, and I think it's entirely appropriate. And the color, as they've proposed it, I think is fine, though I'll be open to whatever others think.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
I, I can approve as presented. I think it's.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Intriguing and appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Who am I to disagree?
Commissioner Bland.
I have a lawnmower right outside by window that is so noisy. At the moment, I feel like I'm a Victorian and, and appreciate the Victorian Society's comment, which is my own. So yes, approved.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Lutfi.
Exciting and appropriate.
Okay, great, thank you all. So I think we can move to approve this. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you read the motion?
Yes. In the matter of LPC two-three-zero-zero-nine-eight-seven, thirty-nine Commerce Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, a late federal-style house built in eighteen thirty-one to thirty-two and later altered in the French Second Empire style in the early nineteen eighteen seventies by DT Atwood, the application is to install a rooftop skylight. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. And I also note that the designation report describes number thirty-nine and forty-one Commerce Streets as twins, featuring similar historic alterations with mansard roof additions, and that there are facade easements at thirty-nine Commerce Street and forty-one Commerce Street held by the New York City Landmarks Conservancy. I recommend approval, finding that this mid-nineteenth-century building has been modified throughout its history, along with its twin at number forty-one Commerce Street, including alterations to the facades, masonry openings, and the addition of the mansard roofs. And therefore, the proposed skylight at the roof will be in keeping with the history of alterations at the building. That the proposed dark-finished metal studio skylight and standing seam metal roof will approximate the existing skylight at number forty-one Commerce Street in terms of its design height, massing, and finish, and therefore will be consistent with the changes shared at these twin houses since the nineteen thirties. That the pro, the proposed skylight will only be visible from Barrow Street and will be seen in conjunction with number forty-one skylight, and therefore will not call undue attention to itself. That the installation of the skylight will not result in damage to or demolition of any significant architectural features of the building or the roof, and that the proposed work will be harmonious with the special architectural and historic character of the building and streetscape in the Greenwich Village Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second this motion?
Second.
Right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Bland, is he here?
He is here. He's muted.
Commissioner Bland, you're muted? Give me a thumbs up. Commissioner Bland.
There you are. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Somehow I'm losing my Zoom. Yes, that's a yes. Sorry.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Mr. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Devonshire.
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, that's approved, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC twenty-three dash zero-zero-six-hundred. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block six-twenty, lot four, five-twenty-six Hudson Street and the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a residential building originally built in eighteen thirty-two and later altered, and the application is to construct rooftop additions and alter the areaway.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. The staff will take you through the presentation. So Karina, if you could unmute yourself, I will give the presentation to you. Okay, if you click on your screen, you can begin, thanks. Okay, good afternoon Commissioners, Karina Bishop Preservation Staff. The project before you is five-twenty-six Hudson Street, a row house originally built in eighteen thirty-two and later altered with a fourth, a fourth-story mansarded addition and storefront and fill up the two lower floors. The proposal is to conduct, construct a stair bulkhead at the roof, which will be visible over the primary facade to the north and south on Hudson Street. The visibility exceeds what can be approved at staff level. The installation will provide direct access to the roof level and accessibility code requirement that is triggered by the building's change of use from residential to a community facility. The Commissioners will also note that the areaway work was originally advertised, will be reviewed at staff level and is not part of today's presentation. Here's the roof plan, showing the new bulkhead, which is shaded in blue and will be situated at the same location as an existing roof, roof hatch above an existing stairwell. The axon model shows the new bulkhead within the context of the block and surrounding buildings, most of which are taller, as you can see. The bulkhead will be stepped back eight feet from the primary facade that you can see in these two axon views here. The building section shows the interior layout of the stair and the proposed eight-foot height of the bulkhead. The visual, visible portion of the bulkhead over the primary facade is about eight feet. So you can see that dimension here in the sightline. A mock-up clad in orange netting was constructed at the roof. And here are photos from the roof where you can see the mock-up as well as the existing roof hatch. The mock-up was constructed at a height of eight inches taller than what is now shown on the drawings. And revised mock-up photos are at the end of this presentation, so I will show that a little bit. These photos are street views of the mock-up, showing the visibility to the north and south and further to the west across Hudson Street. There's some additional views with the foliage blocking visibility. This is the primary facade from the street level, and here are some interior plans for your reference. Skip through these. And here are existing and proposed front facades with the bulkhead shaded in blue. And then the existing and proposed rear facade as well. And here is this modified mock-up photo showing the lowered height. And again, the visibility photos. So that concludes the presentation, and the applicants and owners representative are here to answer any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? The applicant? I guess I had a question, and that is whether they, are they replacing the whole stair? Are we configuring the stair, or is it just a bulkhead on top of the existing stair?
I believe, yeah, maybe the Mike Rosani wants to jump in.
Yeah.
To speak a little bit about the interior work.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Mike Rosani with Michael's NRH Architects. So we are replacing the stair just because it is rather, you know, it is beat up over the years, but we're keeping it in the same location with the same openings. So it's a direct replacement. And we are, yeah, so that kind of dictated where the stair bulkhead would end up on the roof.
Okay, so you couldn't change the direction of the.
Yeah.
Stair, okay. All right, and, and how were you able to lower that? What were you able to do to lower it?
The original set of drawings that were presented in the, in the presentation and the mock-up showed the overall height of the bulkhead at eight foot eight. And given that we only need a seven-foot clearance for the stair, we can, you know, accommodate an eight-foot overall bulkhead at the front and lower it by eight inches. So that was just a mistake on our end in terms of, you know, the overall height.
And is this a multiple dwelling or a single family? Oh, I'm sorry.
Present, presently, it's a multiple dwelling. There's retail store on the ground in the basement level, which is a cellar, really. And then there's a duplex apartment on the first and second floor, and there's two apartments on three and four. But we are converting it to a community facility. So we have an alteration CEO application of the department of buildings to change the use.
Okay, because we have seen sometimes sort of bulkheads that have movable tops so that the slope can be in your favor, and then it, with a push of a button, can slide up so that somebody could exit standing, walking up the stairs. But I'm not sure if that's allowable, if it's not a single-family home, so.
I believe that's a single-family requirement. And given the fact that it's a multiple dwelling now too, they are permitted to have a hatch to the roof. But once it changes to a commercial use or a community facility, it requires a stair access directly to the roof.
Okay.
So that's, that's why we couldn't just utilize that existing stair hatch.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions Commissioners? Let's see if there's public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Sonia Gior to see if we have any testimony.
Thank you. So we do not have any sign-ups in advance, so I'll just see if there are any hands raised. It looks like there are not. So I'll note that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends that this application be heard only after the required mock-up of the bulkhead has been constructed and photographed and presented at a public hearing before the Community Board Two Landmarks Committee. And the Community Board Two Board has made a recommendation to the Commission. I'll turn it back to you Chair Carroll.
Okay. Do you wanna, I think that you did send, you did follow up with the community board, and you did send them the mock-up information, correct?
We did. Unfortunately, we had some, you know, this was a moving target during the community board hearing time. We still weren't sure what we were doing with the project. And originally, we were coming to you with a large elevator extension at the rear of the building. And we were juggling a lot of things, and we didn't have time to get the stair bulkhead constructed. We had gotten it done two weeks after the community board hearing. And we did do a pole mock-up with caution tape that we showed to the community board. And those heights and visibilities of the stair bulkhead match what you're looking at today. So there was no increase to visibility in terms of what they saw. But at the time of the hearing, in the full community board hearing, they did not see the mock-up photos. But they have been provided with those. And I have yet to hear back from their office whether or not they have reviewed them or if they walked by the site, because the mock-up is still onsite.
Okay.
So I'm not aware of what they're doing about that.
All right, and just to be clear, so that view from the. All right, and just to be clear, so that view from the side, you see it against the sidewall of the taller building. Um, but then there is also this view A where you're looking straight across at it. Um, but in that case, you do see it, it's lower than the adjacent buildings and in the context of skylights and other rooftop elements, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so Commissioners, any other final questions? Not seeing any. I'm sending you all requests to unmute. Right, and Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Um, and as has been presented, the, uh, stair bulkhead is a required, um, feature, uh, for this particular building, uh, given its use. And in the views, as we see, we do see that it's seen against the taller building to the side. And then over the front facade, you see it in the context of skylights and in the streetscape of taller buildings. So, um, we'll begin our discussion on that. And Commissioner Davensure, would you like to start that one?
I actually think that this is acceptable. It's a little bit, it's a little bit visible. But, um, if the applicant could work with staff to reduce the size of it, I think it's okay.
Okay, and I think the applicant has already made some adjustments to bring it down to the minimum height.
Okay.
Okay, great. So Commissioner Chen.
I, I, I agree with Commissioner Davensure.
Okay, and Commissioner Bland?
Um, if those adjustments have already been made, then I can accept it as, as, uh, proposed.
Uh, Commissioner Lutfi?
Uh, me too. I, I can approve.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I think, um, with some minor adjustments, I think this is acceptable and appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, if it cannot be reduced further, uh, I can approve it as presented.
And, uh, Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree, appropriate.
Okay, great. And I think, as I said, they've, they've brought it down to the minimum height at this point. Um, but I think it does read as a typical rooftop accretion and seen on a roof with other accretions. And in a, of, uh, context of a variety of heights, um, adjacent buildings. And, um, but we can ask them to continue to explore the finish and other, um, details that may help its visibility received from view. Uh, but I think we have approval to, we have a consensus to approve as is today. So Commissioner Davensure, would you make that motion?
In the matter of five twenty-six Hudson Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, LPC number twenty-three zero zero six zero zero, an application to construct rooftop additions and alter the area way. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant ar- architectural features. The proposed stair bulkhead will help meet accessibility code requirements for the building's new use as a community facility. That the simple form and massing of the stair bulkhead set back from the Hudson Street facade will be subservient to the historic building and will not overwhelm the facade. That the simple silhouette, massing and neutral beige cladding of the stair bulkhead will be typical of rooftop structures in this portion of the historic district. And when viewed over the front facade obliquely from the north and south, these views will be consistent with the character and typical roofscapes within this historic district, which historically featured a variety of visible rooftop additions. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the Greenwich Village Historic District.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Davensure.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item, thank you.
The next item is public hearing item number eight, LPC twenty-two dash one zero three eight eight. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block eleven forty-four lot nine, one fifty-nine West Seventy-second Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. This is a modern-style commercial building built in nineteen seventy-two to seventy-three, and the application is to re-clad the facade.
Okay Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. I think this is not the right item. Oh, you are correct. Sorry. This one has the right.
There we go.
Yeah.
Sorry. My apologies. Gary, I'm gonna give you control of the presentation then. Whoops. And if you could just click on your screen. Gary, you just need to click on your screen. Gary, can, can you hear us? You seem to be muted. If you are speaking, we cannot hear you.
Uh, Brian, uh, would, do you think you could go through the presentation while we try to get audio to Gary?
Yeah, sure, I could do that.
Thanks.
Abby, do you want to give me control of the, the screen then?
Yes, me. Okay, you should be able to click on your screen and then you'll be able to advance the slide.
Okay, so this property is one fifty-nine West Seventy-second Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. Um, this, uh, building was built, um, circa nineteen seventy-one. Um, on the left, it shows a nineteen forties tax photograph. Um, in the center is, uh, designation photograph. And on the right is a street view screenshot of the existing, uh, storefront. There's currently scaffolding there. And in, um, I believe it was twenty nineteen, there was an approval to, um, remove so, uh, this signage here and install new signage up here. And as part of that, um, some of these tiles were to be replaced in kind. So, um, what the applicant has found is that, um, they were hoping that some of these tiles are present behind here. They were not. Um, they're unable to find the tiles. And as you'll see later in this, there is some cracking and some deficiencies with the tile. So what they are doing is proposing a cementitious stucco finish for the facade, which is in line with other, uh, materials used on this block of West Seventy-second Street. Um, these are just some existing, um, condition photographs of West Seventy-second Street, which shows the, um, varied, uh, materials on, on the block. It's a very overly commercial district. Um, so there is a lot of altered townhouses, um, which have one and two-story commercial uses on the ground floor. This is just a text map, Sanborn map, as well as, um, Hello. Oh, hi Gary. I'm sorry, I was having massive computer problems. I don't know what happened. Okay, if you want, I can, um, hand it off to you from here and I can advance the slides for you. I don't know if you heard my introduction, kind of giving the background of the project. Yes, I heard. Thank you very much, Brian. Are you getting an echo from me? A little bit, yeah. All right, let me try.
We still have an echo.
Still, yeah. I'm sorry.
Janafio, do you have, um, YouTube on as well?
I do, but it's, it's muted.
Could, could you turn the YouTube off?
Yeah. Is that better? No. Oh, I see. I was in here twice. Has that?
I think that's better now.
Yeah, I had it, I was in the Zoom meeting twice somehow.
Okay. Okay, yeah, go ahead and just let me know when you want me to advance the slide.
Okay, so, uh, as Brian said, this building was built in the nineteen thirties and then was later altered um, in the seventies to include tile. What we're proposing is to remove the tiles as they become, um, are, they're starting to become detached from the building. And they are creating an unsafe condition for the street, which has, um, made the owner of the building need to put up a, a shed to protect the public. So what we're proposing to do is to try and, um, introduce a different material onto the building as, um, trying to evoke what you see in this image here. So the original building was clad in a cementitious, um, material. So we're proposing a, um, a, um, a three-part stucco system for the building, which would fit within the character of the neighborhood as both the buildings flanking to the left and to the right, um, are clad in, um, stucco. So if you could advance the slide. So this is what the proposed streetscape would look like. The two buildings to the left are both clad in stucco. Um, the, the color choice that the owner wants to go with would try and match, um, as a nu- a neutral color, which would be consistent with the buildings flanking either side of it. Please advance the slide. So here's the building in its current condition. Um, as you can see that there is a construction shed, um, in place to stop the tiles from falling onto the street. So advance, please. So these are the conditions that you can see. So it's become apparent that the existing tiles are not, are no longer adhering to the masonry backup. Um, we've also tried to determine if there are any tiles that are similar or, um, if it can be replaced, and we have not been able to find anything, um, that would be, uh, suitable. We also feel that any sort of tile would not stick to this building as they're already falling off, which is why we're, um, suggesting doing a stucco system. Please advance the slide. Um, there's many, uh, examples of stucco within the district. On various streets, including Seventy-second Street, um, and please advance the slide. And these, more examples of stucco. Please advance the slide. More, more examples. Please advance the slide. Same thing. Please advance the slide. So here's the two, um, solutions. This, the, sorry, I'm a bit flustered here because of the technical difficulty. Um, here the two, um, conditions side by side, so existing and proposed. So what we're looking to do here is evoke that nineteen thirties kind of, um, look, but also keeping it modern as, um, it's shown here with the tiles. Um, so what we're proposing is three-part stucco system with joints, in a smooth, um, application as the Community Board wished for it to be smooth, almost like a limestone finish. Also furthering to evoke what was there before. Um, we don't want to continue the stucco down to the ground. So we're proposing a stone base of a limestone material or similar suited stone that would match the, um, the stucco. Um, we're proposing to paint the stucco as this is a paint store. Um, and he is using a neutral color to fit in with the surrounding buildings. I believe it's HC ninety-two Benjamin Moore Color Historic Color Collection. We believe that this, um, would fit in appropriately with the surrounding buildings while also falling back to its past. It is also imperative that we remove these tiles from the building so that they don't continue to fall. And we can replace them with a new material so that the shed can come down and create a, uh, safe space for the public. If you advance to the next slide. So there was some confusion from the Community Board. They thought we were proposing ephes. This is not ephes. This is a traditional and historic three-part, um, hydrated lime and Portland cement stucco. Um, it's, it will be put on in three parts, scratch coat, brown coat and finish coat. Um, being that they want a smooth finish, we're gonna require, um, samples prior to full execution. Um, so that we can ensure that, one, it's not too smooth so that it would crack and not too, um, course that it would not be in, uh, what the Community Board. And that's, that in summation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll see if there's public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Sonya Gior to take us through the testimony.
Thank you. Do you have several signups? Our first speaker will be Mark Diller from Community Board Seven, and I'll be promoting you to panelists now. And if you can please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon Commissioners. I am Mark Diller. I'm a member of Community Board Seven and of its Preservation Committee. I thank, uh, Michelle Parker and, uh, Kay Carpen, whom you usually see in this space, uh, for the chance to present to you today. Um, we were very much in favor of this, uh, of this proposal and, uh, recommend its approval to you. The building, uh, as you heard, was already vastly improved by a change in signage from a few years ago, uh, that finally said goodbye to the nineteen seventies and brought the signage, uh, something more to the current era. Um, a, a side note is that the further, uh, uh, a, a small portion of this project would actually make the signage at the top of this structure even more subtle and, and perhaps more appropriate than what's there already. Um, I personally am no fan, as my colleagues will tell you, I'm no fan of stucco as a primary facade material. But in this case, um, I join with my colleagues in, in, in recommending its approval to you. Um, the existing clay tiles, of course, as you've heard, are no bargain at this point, uh, being badly degraded um, and pass their useful life. Um, but it's worth noting that while the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District extends up and down, uh, my district quite considerably, uh, there are different neighborhood characters within that larger historic district. And this is very much a commercial avenue, um, as much as any other that you'd want to talk about. And so what's appropriate on West Seventy-second Street wouldn't be appropriate on West Seventy-fourth. But in this case, it certainly would be, um, in keeping with that commercial, uh, uh, character and composition. Um, we are grateful that, that we were heard on the proposal for a smooth finish, both because that furthers the effort by the applicant to mirror or emulate the building at one sixty-three. I believe you saw a slide that showed you that facade. Um, and the, the emulation of limestone finish that it has. And also because stucco often, um, is difficult to clean from graffiti when there is a rough, uh, surface. Um, so this bill, this proposal brings this building closer to its neighbors and to its origins and is very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and therefore we recommend its approval to you. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Thank you. Um, we have another speaker signed up, which is Sean Corsandy from Landmark West, and I'll be promoting you to panelists now, Sean. And if you can please unmute your mic and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon Commissioner Sean Corsandy for Landmark West.
The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates this longstanding business, which has been on the block for 49 years. There's no question that the current facade is in need of repair and as existing is not of historic importance. That said, our committee cannot help but feel this is a race to the bottom. From Renwick, Aston Mulling Guards Monumental but Graceful, Ziggurat Pedimented Provident Loan Society to the Utilitarian Refacing of 1972 and on to today's proposal, there is a continual simplification and dumbing down of the facade over the past 90 years. Without overembellishing, at least the Abraham Sperling facade maintained a sense of texture and materiality with its scaled tile, while the proposed stucco re-cladding leaves a flatness. There is no evidence of its landmark status, save for the formality of this very hearing. In the precedent shown, none of the samples have bays as wide as these or feature facades as wholly consuming a structure otherwise bereft of ornamentation or definition of any kind. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee requests that the material be reconsidered or at least a scale-giving definition be incorporated into this very basic design. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do not have any other speakers signed up, and I do not see any hands raised. So I will turn it back to you, Jer Carol.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the comments.
Yeah. To the comment about the ornateness of the building, the, the immediate buildings to the left and to the right, if we made it too elaborate, it wouldn't fit in with the buildings adjacent. And also, we're trying to marry the two different styles here. The, in 1930, the art deco facade, it just wouldn't fit in on the street with the two adjacent buildings. And this is an attempt to do it subtly. The owner wanted to have it completely smooth, which we introduced these scorelines into the building to try and evoke that character from the original 1932 facade while still keeping it more clean and modern like it, like it is today.
Okay, and you have, what is the coping material at the top?
So the coping today is a, just a, it's a metal coping. We would keep it the same.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? All right, I think we'll get ready to move to our discussion. So, all right, here we go. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion? Or actually, Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Some more.
Thank you, and Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion to, and we've seen this application, to replace the 1970s tile with a stucco. There is evidence in the tax photo of a stucco cladding at the time of construction and of ovarian style. And, and there is stucco found on adjacent buildings and storefronts that have been added to the warehouses on this street. And so with that, we'll ask Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this discussion?
Sure. I, I don't think this is appropriate. I, I think that while it might look passively banal now, I think that in about 10 minutes, it's going to get hit with graffiti or stickers or whatever. Having stucco on a facade so close to hand on a major commercial street is, in my view, a mistake and invitation to abuse. And I think that, you know, there's, there are many options they could do. They could use true stone or stone, you know, porcelain tiles that are meant for adhere, adherence to the exterior with proper adhering materials that will last a good long time. Tiles per se are not the reason that this building is falling apart. It's, it's the quality of the installation that's, that's the fault. Something has to be down at the street. Also, I would strongly suggest, since they are doing stucco, they look at, look carefully at the historic photo and try to emulate a little bit of the richness and dimensionality that that stucco facade had. There's no reason that they can't do it.
Okay, so I guess I know you prefer a material other than stucco, but given the historic fact, the historic condition with stucco, if they had different detailing, would you be comfortable?
I, I, I think from a strictly historic perspective, a restorative approach would be obviously appropriate. But I think it would be a, 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 no, looking at what's presented, what's presented is not appropriate. Let's put it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with my colleague completely.
Commissioner Chen?
I would, I would defer, I would like to hear what the rest of the commissioners think. Because, you know, I totally sympathize with what Commissioner Goldblum said. Having been, you know, our district had to maintain a lot of graffiti removal, but I would defer to the, I would like to listen to what the rest, like Fred has to say.
Okay, sure. And, you know, I just, also, the question of what may or damage may, or vandalism may or may not occur, I guess, is also not necessarily one of appropriateness, because we don't know if it'll get graffiti. It's not necessarily stucco that would generate graffiti. The, if it were stone, I suppose it would be equally a blank surface for a potential tag. So I think we should think about it in terms of historic appropriateness and not about the fact that it might get graffiti in the future. Okay, Commissioner Bland?
Yes. Well, I think the issue of graffiti is, is an interesting one, particularly for a paint store. If anybody can go out and paint it up the next morning and match it with Benjamin Moore paints, they should be able to do it at Janeway Plaza. So I was going to suggest that maybe they bring the stone up, which is really minuscule, it looks like, maybe to the underside of the sign, you know, that far up. But your point about, I mean, if it's graffiti, and it shouldn't be about graffiti, because that's not our purview precisely, but maybe just a little more stature. It would be an important thing to bring some sort of stone, a limestone, up to that point and then have a matching stucco above that could, could be a compromise. But I'm not sure that what's being proposed is inappropriate once you remove the aspect of maintenance with graffiti, et cetera, et cetera. And, and by the way, let me just comment that it is an ephesus. It is the right kind of stucco, at least as far as I understand it, that three-part application, and it was there once. So perhaps it's the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
Well, I think it was really great that they had tile. It just, at one point, it doesn't look like it's realistic anymore. I'm not having a problem with the stucco, and I agree that we can't really, we can't really make our decision based on the graffiti. And then, yes, they're a paint company, and they should be able to clean it up. I actually think that they might want to work with staff on the color because they are a paint company. I think we do something that's a little richer. And that could be anything. I mean, it could be a rich gray, it could be one of a lot of things. But what they did, I, what they selected, I think, is very bland.
Okay, thank you.
But I just, a point of clarification, too.
What?
Can I just jump in for a point of clarification?
Yeah.
Actually are proposing to use a masonry paint on the stucco, so it would not just be the exposed natural stucco if it would be painted from the beginning. So maintenance of any graffiti or otherwise would simply be recoded. So that, that's what's before you today.
So, but what are you saying? Is that the color?
The, the color is at, has rendered, let's see, the, what is being suggested. I don't know if they're open to changing that or not. I'm just saying that it will have an additional masonry paint coating on top of the three-part stucco that was explained to you earlier.
Got it.
And Jeannie, you're not suggesting that bland is bad, are you?
No, especially not bland with a Fred in front of it.
Bland with a capital B. All right, Commissioner Shamir Barron?
Sorry, I think that the stucco is appropriate. And and I think the colors can change. I, I don't know that I, that the color that's being proposed, which is very creamy, is necessarily great. But I think if they're not, if it's not a stucco that's sort of impregnated with, with a pigment, then the, the color, it seems to me, can change. But overall, I actually think it is all right for this facade to be stucco, given its history and sort of departure from the very original example.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Turned off because somebody was phoning in. I, I agree. I think that the stucco can be appropriate in this case. And I think that using different colors for the signage, the window framing, having some joint indications will keep this from being a totally, as was said earlier, bland building. But it's just very simple, and, and I think it's okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Commissioner Chen, we have four commissioners, I think, who are okay with the stucco, the application of the stucco. And, you know, there are some thoughts they could continue to work with the staff on the color. We could even suggest some of the detailing.
That's exactly where I was heading. I think Commissioner Adish Amira made a good suggestion, which is that the, the, the texture of the stucco in this case i- is acceptable, and obviously they should work with the staff on the coloring.
Okay. All right, so I think we have enough to approve this. And so why don't I go ahead and make this motion, and we'll do the vote and see where we are in the matter of docket number 2210388159, West 72nd Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. A modern-style commercial building built 1972 to 73, or let's say re-clad, altered in 1972 to 73. And the application is to re-clad the facade. Is that correct, Corey? It seems like there's a photo of a building, of the building in 1940 with stucco. So the tile seems to be the 1972 change.
Yeah, that dates from the, the early 70s, replacement or alteration in re-cladding.
Okay, all right. Staff notes that the building is not one for which the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District was designated. Staff further notes that the existing signage was approved under a certificate of appropriateness in 2019 and will be reinstalled. And I, I note that myself. The commission, all right. So then I recommend approval, finding that the existing facade material, which dates to 1972 to 73, has been compromised and is in poor condition and is not a good example of the modern style. And therefore, its removal will not diminish the streetscape or the historic district. That the proposed tan-colored cementitious stucco cladding will be consistent with the variety of materials found on commercial buildings and storefronts on the highly commercial thoroughfare of West 72nd, 72nd Street. And that the stucco material will recall the stucco cladding that is evident in the tax photo, that the scoring will align with window elements, creating a harmonious composition. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the streetscape or the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. However, I recommend that the applicant work in consultation with the staff to carefully select the color, final color sample, review and approve the final color sample to ensure that the color is, is is strong, rich, and contextual within the streetscape. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Jer Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Barron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Nay.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Nope.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Six in favor and none, two opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Please continue to work with the staff on the color, and we'll move to the next item now.
Next item is public hearing item number nine, LPC 22-07597. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 1236, Lot 58, 270 West 89th Street in the Riverside West End Historic District. This is a cementic-style community house designed by Hertz and Abramson and built 1927 to 28. The application is to replace windows.
Hey, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. They now have control of the presentation. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Prince, and I'm proposing to you the fire-rated and lot-line window replacement at 270 West 89th Street. So to begin here, this is a, this project is in window, a complete window restoration and replacement project. So just to clear up any confusion, everything you see on this facade, which is the front-facing facade, this is all going to be under a separate, separate staff-level application. We're going to restore the stained glass and wood windows in kind with a shop restoration. So all of the windows that we're going to be presenting to you today are in the secondary facades on the west, east, and south facades. 270 West 89th Street is located in the Riverside West End Historic District between 89th and 88th Streets. You may be familiar that this building also is annexed to 257 West 88th Street, which is the Benai Jesrom Synagogue. Both buildings are separate buildings, but connected by an annex, so separate applications. Both buildings are owned and operated currently by Benai Jesrom. The building that we'll be focusing on today, we refer to as the Community Center because it holds community events, schools. It is used as a community house for all of those a part of and serving Benai Jesrom congregation. Again, all windows are in scope, but as you see the front facade here, they are under separate staff-level applications, so you can kindly ignore those from this application. These are the historic tax photos from 1928, showing the original construction. Again, you can see a little bit of the windows that we are proposing to replace on the sides here, but the front facade again is a staff-level approval. We wanted to show you here that the windows on the side of the building are minimally invisible from parts of West 89th Street. These will be included in our replacement, and they will be replaced with the muttons that you see that indicated on the proposed drawing. The special windows that we're going to be discussing today for your review are actually not visible from the street. They are located in two interior-facing courtyards. As you can see here with the purple line and the rectangle, I'm showing you an exploded view of the three separate returns of that east courtyard. So this same design is copied on the east side, on the west side as well. So you'll see an exploded version of the proposed windows on the west side as well. Again, the special windows that we are proposing for replacement are located on floors one to four in these interior courtyards, so they are not visible from the street. These windows on the west elevation, again, taken from a point of view on 270 West 89th Street, these windows are in our scope for lot-line replacement, but they are not the special windows that I will be discussing. They are clear-glazed, double-hung windows, which will be, which are fire-rated, and we will be replacing them in kind with fire-rated windows, clear glazing, again, as you see in the proposed elevation to the left. Showing on this slide, we're showing that the only windows that are really minimally visible from the street are the bulkhead windows. Again, they are not special windows. Again, this is an exploded version of the west interior courtyard, exploded views of each respective return. And the special windows here are located on floors two to four, again tucked inside this west courtyard that's not visible from the street. The south elevation, you can see here, taken from a bird's eye view. Benai Jesrom Synagogue is located in front of you, but in the red highlighted area here on the community house, we will be replacing those windows in kind. You can see here the top three floors, which are visible, have centerline muttons going through them, and we intend to replicate those. have centerline muttons going through them, and we intend to replicate those muttons in our fire-rated applications, as well as this set of windows here that is located on the fourth floor. They have horizontal muttons that are that are segregating the vision panel, and we will be replicating those in kind as well. The special windows that are part of this application are located on the lower floors tucked behind Benai Jesrom synagogue. So again, they are not visible from the street. Getting into the windows themselves, the windows are all steel fire-rated windows. They have a historic wired glass in them that was typical of the time period of construction. What's interesting about these windows is that at some point with within Benai Jesrom's occupation of the building, these fire-rated windows were modified. There is a lead caming that you can see here that breaks up the windows into separate lights. And there are colored pieces of colored glass that are inserted into these lead cans. So we are referring to this as a modified sash, because you have an original steel fire-rated window assembly, very typical of the time of construction. However, these windows were modified, likely because of the program requirements inside the Benai Jesrom Community House at the time. And however, they were modified to include these lead cans and the colored panes. The challenge here is that the modifications to these existing fire-rated windows have not held up. As you can see here, they are cracked, they are missing, some of the window shards are incredibly sharp, and it poses a serious safety risk to the inhabitants of Benai Jesrom Community House, which is also used several floors of the Benai Jesrom Community House are used as a school. So we're looking to provide them with a thermally improved, fire-rated, of course, adhering with code, and a safe window assembly so that they can enjoy their space. Another important thing to be said is because of the extreme deterioration of these frames, a lot of these windows are not operable. So Benai Jesrom is really looking forward to having a new fire-rated window adhering with code, as long as well as a an actual operable window that will be brought to its original operation. All of the windows here you was in this application are double-hung windows and some feature a fixed transom above. So again, just to reiterate, the modified assembly is on the interior side of the of the window. So you can see here that that fire-rated assembly and the wired glass below is peeking out behind the cracked glaze. And other things to note again is that the windows are currently not operable. Most of them are currently not inoperable or inoperable. Years of sealant paint and just, you know, deterioration over time. The community house has sought to put plastic over the windows for safety. They have netted the windows from the outside so that glass doesn't fall to the neighboring properties below. And they've also taken to stuffing insulation to the gaps that are present between the sashes and the and the frames. This program space in particular, over the years, Benai Community House has seen a different has seen a different number of programs come into their building. So what was formerly perhaps a viewing room or a dining room is now a gym. So in this room, this serves the gymnasium for the school students. And as you can see, because of the program of the new community house, they resorted to putting up safety glazing in order to protect these windows from further disrepair. However, as a result, these safety glazing panels have been fixed into place, which essentially leaves that these windows are basically rotting from the outside. They are virtually inaccessible, except for those very small interior courtyards, which are difficult to get to. So with our application, we are also proposing a glass package that will include safety glazing for the areas of the gymnasium where their program sees fit. This is just showing you an example of where these windows are located. Again, this is an example of a single fire-rated window, one of the special windows that we're presenting to you, that is located tucked into the west elevation interior courtyard, as well as their respective returns. Again, these windows are virtually hidden from the street view, and the neighboring buildings on both the east and the west cover majority of these windows. This is the just just an example of our proposed product. We want to provide a fire-rated window assembly with clear fire-rated glass. We will also be providing obscured glass for the recent program changes in the community house, where they will require privacy. These are the details for the windows. Again, a fire-rated window assembly to match a fire-rated window assembly. We are also seeking to produce a mock-up and also some probes before the start of construction. We the existing windows are located in a masonry pocket. They are not look, they are not directly attached to the steel lintel, as one might think. So we are also proposing some additional hidden concealed steel structure in order to properly anchor the windows at the heads and jams. Again, another example of where the windows are located, typically the bottom floors of the interior courtyards tucked away, again overshadowed by the neighboring buildings. This is just showing the existing window in the proposed application. And again, the the proposed details. This again is highlighting the windows in the gymnasium. You could see the safety glazing glare that's located on on the left. We will be providing a safety glazing package for those windows based on that program. We are also adding in some panels for the existing HVAC ductwork that Benai Jesrom has included over the years, again, due to their program changes. And that concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have questions? And so just to just to clarify, your the side facades, your lotline facades have the same windows and you're proposing the same replacement. So the windows we're looking at around the lotline facades and in the non-visible interior courtyard.
So this is probably best shown on the south elevation. Sorry, I'll just jump back to that. So on the south elevation, you can see here in the the upper floors from floors five, six, and seven up, they have centerline muttons separating the glazing, the the DLOs. So we will be replicating those in kind, as well as the set of windows below here, these S-sevens with the horizontal muttons, we will be replicating those as well. Those are technically visible from the street if you're just right on Eighty-Eighth Street.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi, please go ahead.
So what window manufacturer are you using to do this job?
So this is the number one question. There's really only one fire-rated manufacturer that serves New York City, and I'm sure you all know who that is. We had spoken with them about how to replicate something like this, but anything applied to a fire-rated assembly sort of automatically defaults its assembly. So the other way around that would be a very costly and lengthy process for us to develop our own fire-rated assembly, have it independently UL tested, and then constructed, which ended up being an enormous cost burden on our client. So we are going with the one window manufacturer, Optimum Windows, to provide our fire-rated windows for this project.
Okay, thank you. All right, other questions? Okay, let's see. We have public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signed up in advance and then get to everyone else. And so I will turn it over to Gregory Kala, our community and intergovernmental affairs associate, to take us through the testimony on this item.
Great. Thank you, Chair Carroll. We received a few signups beforehand, the first being Mark Diller from CB7. So, Mark, I'm going to promote you to panelist now. Just click. And if you could just unmute your line, you will now have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. I am Mark Diller, a member of the Preservation Committee and of Community Board Seven. And I'm here thanks to my colleagues and the co-chairs, Michelle Parker and Kate Carpen. Community Board Seven recommends approval of this proposal. It is worth pausing for a moment that to lament that part of this project relates to the installation of bullet resistance glazing on a house of worship. And that's something that didn't escape our notice as a community board. And so nothing to say about that. It's actually not part of the process, the project as is being presented to you. But it was very much on our hearts as we were reviewing the whole matter. We note that that by and large, these are not visible windows. And to the extent that they are visible, they are on secondary facades, which informed part of our process. There is indeed some loss of detail with respect to some of these windows. And in an ideal world, one would want to keep all of it. Much of it does not appear to be original to the building and and as I said, is not is not is not generally visible from a public way. This was a thoughtful and thorough effort in our evaluation to maintain as much of the overall effect of the glazing and fenestration patterns as was possible under the circumstances, including what you just heard about the re, the restoring of windows with the mutton details and so forth. And matching the size and configuration, as well as doing a yeoman's job of trying to make sure that the insertion into the the moldings emulated the original without compromising the integrity of the structure. The anyway, so so by and large, recognizing the the difficult conditions and the need for the project and applauding the effort to bring it as close as possible to the historic condition, our board voted in favor of approval thirty-four to zero to zero to zero. I thank you for your time.
And next, I will call on Helen Freeman from the Historic District. Helen, I will promote you to panelist now. And you will have three minutes to speak.
Helen Freeman, Historic District's Council. HTC believes that they are that these are protected windows and should therefore be restored or replaced in such a way as to maintain their original intent. We would also note that the interior images presented by the applicant show the consist consistency of the interior mutton pattern to be an apparently important part of the building's form. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Helen. And last, we will have Sean Sean Kishandi from Landmark West. Sean, I will now promote you to panelist. And if you just unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Kishandi for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee appreciates the Nigeshwans taking a cohesive approach in securing their landmarks windows. We also appreciate that all wood and stained glass windows are being restored in kind at staff level. Part of the sweetness of this building is evidenced by its period interiors on slides twenty-seven through thirty-eight. It's not only the scale that these divisions give the rooms, but also their glow. If vision alone were the interest, a proposal with alternating clear lights might be a solution, but operability is also key. This leaves the transoms, which are just for light and are fixed and are planned to remain so. Reinstalling a reminder of the design intent can go a long way, since the sashes themselves cannot be maintained. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee suggests the colored glass be maintained whenever possible. Thank you.
Okay, and that seems to be all the hands that we have.
Thank you very much. I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to some of any of the comments that we've heard.
Sure. So we have investigated, as as Mark so graciously spoke on, we had investigated options for emulating the glazing or emulating the patterns through the glazing. And one of the things that we had worked with at the manufacturer was, and this was a way to get a UL, you know, approved product within, you know, normal or doable feasible financial burden. So was we explored the idea of printing the lead cans and the colored glazing items onto the glass itself. This keeps the fire-rated assembly untouched, which means it maintains its fire rating, which is very crucial in this project. But it also emulated a little bit of what we see from the from the interior modified sashes. We had gotten so far as to get some installation photos and some samples over to the director of Benai Jesrom, who felt that the the colored glass or the printed glass approach looked very cheap. It looks like a a poor imitation of what's actually there. If anything, they were they were they were very adamant that if we're going to do this, then it would need to be, you know, a a modified leaded window assembly that would best match the existing, which just wasn't on the table for their schedule and their budget. So we had looked for options to emulate this and the manufacturer was working with us. But ultimately, the requirements for the fire-rated assembly took precedent and we were unable to to fight against that that code requirement.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right, I'm sending you all requests to unmute so that we can move to our discussion. Right, and Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Davenshur, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. And so we're looking at this application to replace the windows with colored and leaded glass that are not on the street-facing facade, and most of which are not visible with new fire-rated assemblies. And we've heard from the applicant on the different approaches that have been studied. So why don't we go ahead and begin that discussion then? So Commissioner Bland, would you like to start this one?
No, I'd like to.
Okay, all right. Oh, Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start it? You're not, I didn't think you were here. So, okay. Okay.
I was here, but I I've lost my connection. So I was in and out.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Lutfi.
I mean, actually, I think the window expert, Commissioner Devonshar, should speak. I'm the window enthusiast. But I mean, this is, so unless, does Michael want to start?
No.
I think so. I'll start.
All right, let me also just sort of provide some context as well. And and you'll see this, I think, reflected in the staff comments that, you know, the applicant is proposing to restore all of the windows on the front facade. And with stained and leaded glass windows on rear facades, we have been a little more flexible depending on the sort of connection it has to the design of the building and or the level of craftsmanship or quality. And so while they may be special windows by virtue of their leaded cans and their colored glass, they are defined as special under the rules that prohibit the staff from being able to replace them. They are windows that we can evaluate to really determine how special they are in terms of their craftsmanship, their quality, their legibility, and understanding that there is a need for fire rating, sort of the feasibility of of trying to address that in the context of windows that are not visible from the public way for the most part. So Commissioner Devonshur, you have your hand up. If you want to start, that's fine.
Only only because I I love Jane and I'm happy to.
I know. You've been three times already. That's why I just didn't want to burden you with a fourth one.
You know, this is this is a painful one for me. I I do appreciate this this kind of window greatly. One, one of the things I did notice is that when they were modified with lead cans, they didn't put any reinforcing bars in them. And and so there's there, they were doomed from the start to to have problems. And were were these on, again, the the applicant mentioned schedule and cost. I don't I don't give a monkey fart about costs, frankly, but I I realize that especially in today's world of getting things and getting things done, scheduling can be a monster. And and so the, you know, I have the angel on one shoulder and the devil on one shoulder and they're arguing.
And and so the, you know, I have the angel on one shoulder and the devil on one shoulder and they're arguing back and forth. And in this particular case, I mean, this, this was a dining room. Now it's a gymnasium. Again, only I and maybe several other dozen window nerds in New York City will go crazy over the fact that I might say, I think it, I think it is sadly appropriate for them to replace these windows.
Okay.
So there.
And thank you for taking the lead.
I I I feel horrible about this, but 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 again, like I, like I said, that when they were installed, when they were modified, they didn't do it right. And so here we, here we are.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioner.
Okay, I'll go now. Okay, thank you for giving me permission to say what to for me to um, thank you for saying what I was thinking, but not as an expert, but someone of someone who's doing a not, you know, an eight hundred window replacement right now in my building. I think it's it's unfortunate, but it I mean, I think we have to be practical about it. And, you know, they need to have these fire rated buildings that meet windows that meet code. I mean, there's no getting around it and they they can't. I mean, it sounds like they tried to do custom windows. I mean, a laudable idea, but it's it's incredibly expensive. Especially in this particular market where you can't even get raw materials to make these windows, let alone the timeframe once you order them. I mean, it's just horrible and prices are continuing to go up. That's not our concern. But it is the reality of the situation. I don't really see how they can do anything else. These windows are not visible. And I they're doing the right thing on the front, which is what, which is really what matters. So I can approve it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I totally agree with the two commissioners who spoke so far. You know, this is the the reality of where we've in a post COVID world. And, you know, we love the original windows and the but being lot line and had to be, you know, the fire ratings and getting stuff done and the scheduling. You know, I I I agree with the comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland, do you think you want to hear some more?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron, I don't know if you're in.
I can get, I can speak to it. I mean, I I wish I could take the windows off their hands because they're so special. But I can't. So I also very regrettable, but seems to be an appropriate solution to the various issues that are that they've presented and that we've discussed. So I think appropriate, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I also agree that it's appropriate in this case.
And Commissioner Goldblum.
Okay, thanks. My kids went to school in this building, so I've been in this building dozens and dozens of time. Times, and I've seen these windows. They're not very craftly made, as Michael noted. They're they're not particularly intricate or interesting. They're leaded. You know, it didn't, that's about it to their specialness. So I I think that, oh, call me a heretic, but I don't, I don't think these really rise to the level of special. Uh, you know, I think it's totally appropriate for them to remove it. And it's not painful at all.
Okay, that's great. I should have started with you, Commissioner Gold. But you also had gone three times already. All right, so Commissioner Devonshire, would you read the motion?
Really, you're gonna?
I'll read it. I'll read it. Okay. Ta ta ta. Okay, in the matter of docket twenty two dash zero seven five nine seven two seventy west eighty nine street Riverside West End Historic District. A semitic style community house designed by Hertz and Avramson and built in nineteen twenty seven to nineteen twenty eight. The application is to replace windows. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Riverside West and Historic District. I further note that the existing windows are comprised of a wire glass outer window with the leaded glass installed on the inside of the frame. I recommend approval finding that the historic colored arc glass and lead caming are deteriorated and if replaced in kind would not meet code requirements for fire rated windows and therefore replacement with code compliant windows is warranted. That the windows to be replaced are not visible from any public thoroughfare, that the existing leaded glass windows are not unique or of a high quality. That a majority of the proposed replacement windows on the rear facades will match the historic windows in terms of configuration, operation and finish. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Derek Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Latby.
Aye.
With six and eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. We'll move to the next and final item.
Okay, and that is public hearing item number ten, LPC twenty one dash zero eight two eight seven. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block fourteen ninety one, lot twenty five, fifty three east seventy ninth street. The New York Society Library Individual Landmark. This is an Italian Renaissance style townhouse designed by Trowbridge and Livingston and built in eighteen sixteen to seventeen. And the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Okay, commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing. Doug, you now have control of the presentation. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Yes, this is Doug Larson. I'm the architect working for the New York Society Library. I would like to actually begin the presentation with a few words from Carolyn Waters, the head librarian, and Gene Pfeiffer, the head of building committee, and they'll turn it back over to me. Carolyn, are there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you, commissioners. I realize we're the last docket of the day, so appreciate your your time today. I'm Carolyn Waters, head librarian at the New York Society Library, and I'm here with our consulting architect, as you heard, Doug Larson of Larson Architecture Works and Jean Parker Pfeiffer, library trustee and the co-chair of our library's building committee. The New York Society Library is the oldest library and cultural institution in New York City and was founded in seventeen fifty four in a room in the Old City Hall. Over the past two hundred and sixty eight years, we've actually moved five times. In nineteen thirty seven, we renovated and moved into the historic John S. and Catherine C. Rogers' house at fifty three east seventy ninth street between Madison and Park Avenues. The library serves readers and writers and families from all over the city and beyond. We have a three hundred thousand volume book collection that is stored in this one site and is available to both members and non-members. We host hundreds of public events each year, present free exhibitions in our gallery and invite the public to use our reference room where we actually also serve coffee and tea every weekday. Library membership, which is open to anyone who wants to join us, includes additional benefits, including access to our open book stocks, stacks, circulating privileges and use of our lovely reading and writing spaces. This beautiful building has served us very well over the past eighty five years. But we are running out of space for both books and for people. Our proposed renovation will address that and provide additional space for both. We're looking to expand into our rear yard in order to build an extension on the cellar and first floor levels for additional book storage. That will then give us room to reconfigure some of the interior spaces. So I'm now going to hand it over to Jean Pfeiffer and and Doug to talk, tell you a little bit more about the plans.
Hi, this is Jean Pfeiffer. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you so much. And I'm so glad to be here with you. And I just wanted to express as a trustee that the entire board of trustees is very enthusiastic about this project. And we fully support building into the rear yard and we actually had applied back in two thousand and two to do a similar rear yard expansion, but the application at that time, which was approved in two thousand and four, included building up on the roof level and adding several floors up there. And we were actually approved to do this much larger project, which we then were unable to complete or undertake at that time. So this is a much scaled down project as far as exterior impact and is only to build into the rear yard. And so I hope you all will look favorably on this because it certainly helps us utilize our space better and really move the books into this rear yard addition, which has no windows and is really just suitable for book storage. And then that, as Carolyn said, frees up more interior space. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn and Jean. So I'll advance through the slides now and just tell you a little bit more about the project. I'm just trying to get back to the screen and I have to keep clicking here to advance. Okay. So you may be familiar with this. It's a quite elegant building on seventy ninth street, just off Madison Avenue. Here you can see it nineteen forty from the tax map, tax photographs. It was built in nineteen seventeen on as a private residence by Trowbridge and Livingston, and the library acquired it in nineteen thirty six. And in nineteen thirty six, they renovated it again. George Thompson was the architect, and I'll explain in a minute what he did to the building on the right, the photograph from the landmarks designation report. For the block context, on the left, a historical map from nineteen fifty five, you can see the library here in orange and you can see the original townhouses that it was surrounded by. Now, the library is not in a historic district, but it is an individual landmark. It's at the nexus of three districts, the Upper East Side Historic District, the Park Avenue Historic District, and the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. But it's part of a row of four individual landmarks. All important townhouses, the most distinguished being designed by Trowbridge and Livingston and Carrer and Hastings. So here's an aerial photograph. You can see the four townhouses right here, the library and the other three. On the corner, there is a co-op thirty ninety seventy ninth street, which was designed by Kenneth Murchison for Emily Post, believe it or not. This property right here has just been developed into a large co-op building called the Benson. And back behind the library is the Manhattan Church of Christ. These are all multifamily dwellings on East Eightieth Street. So here's a graphic of the block, and we're looking at this really for two reasons, to check the degree of rear yard infill on this block, the donut, as landmarks likes to call it, and also the degree of visibility from the surrounding public way. As you can see, the library is built almost full to within twelve feet of its rear lot line. Library's right here. And almost the entire western end of this block is built full. The co-op is built full, the Benson is built full. There's another co-op on the corner here, which does not affect us. This is the Manhattan Church of Christ right here, number forty eight east eightieth street, which is built full, very tall here, and then two stories here up to the rear lot line. These two multifamily dwellings, one has a small garden and number fifty two is almost built full up to four stories. So the bulk of the donut is left only on the east end of the block. Also, there's a diagram here showing visibility from Madison Avenue. It's just a very thin sliver that you can see through and you see largely the side wall of the library. This, it's not this rear yard, proposed rear yard extension is not visible at all in the public way. Right, here's some photographs to show you some of the block context from the public way. This is the sliver that I just talked about, visible from Madison Avenue. Excuse me. On the left here, on the right, this is east eightieth street. Here is the co-op on the corner of Madison and Eightieth. This is the Manhattan Church of Christ. And these are the two multifamily buildings which I was just speaking about. So it's none of the rear yards are visible from Eightieth Street and they're not visible from Park Avenue either. All right, so I'll take you into the rear yards with a series of photographs. It's much easier to understand what we're talking about from photographs. On the left is a a view of the library's rear yard, which is twelve feet wide by forty two feet long. Lot forty eight is the Manhattan Church of Christ, which is built full up to two stories. Lot forty seven is the one multifamily with a little garden and this lot here is the other multifamily that's built to four stories. This lot twenty seven is directly east of the library on seventy ninth street. This is a retaining wall, I should mention, so the the grade is way up here on East Eightieth Street. On the right, there's a photograph looking west, the scaffolding that's here is when this photograph was taken, this was the rear yard protection that the Benson had erected. Again, the retaining wall and the library's access to its own rear yard. If if one were to go up to the roof of the library and look down, you could see the rear yard here dotted in white. This is Manhattan Church of Christ with their two different level of lots of rear yard extensions. This is the rear yard of the Benson, which has no windows. This is the rear yard of the co-op on the corner, which actually has a cellar infill service court. The garden of number fifty is right here with its tree. Number fifty two is barely visible through the tree. And then fifty nine east seventy ninth street has a very tiny rear yard with condensing units in it directly east of the library. So I'm going to go back to the drawings. On the left is an existing section through the library, north, south, looking east, and on the right is proposed section looking east. And you can see what George Thompson did in nineteen thirty seven. He gutted the rear of the building. And he inserted twelve floors of stacks, self-supporting stacks, like the kind you find in an old university library. The shell of the building was left, and it was just gutted top to bottom in the back third. The main principal rooms are still extent. So the main lobby is here with a staircase going upstairs and the main reading room, main members room. So most of these rooms on the south facade still have much of their original detail. Seventy ninth street is right here, the grade of seventy ninth street, and you can see the grade at Eightieth Street in the rear yard is much higher. And the retaining wall that the library has about ten foot difference right there. So the proposed rear yard extension is right here. It's a permitted bulk as of right by zoning. Because we're a community facility in a residential district, we would be allowed a one story rear yard extension twenty three feet above the curb. So one tall space, twenty three feet high. And we would also pick up a cellar level. The cellar does not count in terms of zoning bulk. Here's another drawing of the north elevation of the library. If you were to be in the rear yard of the garden of the townhouse behind, if we cut a section through the the ground level is right here. The hazy white area is the the rear yard extension of Manhattan Church of Christ. And the blue here represents the proposed rear yard addition as it would be viewed from the north. Here are some plans, proposed plans. You can see the nineteen thirty seven stacks right here across the back of the building on three different levels. The proposed rear yard extension would have a lower level, which would be mostly folio storage. This would be the cellar level. The first floor would be high density stacks, very, very tall high density stacks. You'll see that in a minute. Part of the scheme of this project is to clear the front of the cellar level of the library, which is now high density storage, and move it to the rear, bringing this area up with its windows restored to be a program space for the library. So here's a sectional rendering of what we'd like to do. So here's a sectional rendering of what we'd like to do. The upper level, as I said, with very, very tall, high-density storage for books that are rarely, uh, rarely gotten at a lower level with the folio storage. Uh, this, uh, extension would hold about twenty-eight thousand volumes, which, um, as Carolyn said, this it's, uh, the library has three hundred thousand volumes, so it's almost ten percent of the library's collection. So I'm going to return to the photographs to show you what this would look like mocked up from three different directions. So on the left, there's a before, on the right, there's an after. This is a view taken from the, um, rear yard of the co-op building at Seventy-Ninth and Madison, looking east. So this is the library's yard here. And a twenty-three foot, uh, high rear yard extension would look like this. And we propose to clad it in a high-efficiency envelope, a metal panel system, which is, uh, self-flashing and, um, gets us the proper R values in, in a very thin wall section. It's also something that doesn't need a lot of maintenance, and we would do it in a light color to avoid, uh, adding any dark elements back here, um, and increasing the, um, the level of darkness in the rear yards. Uh, this is a view from the north. You, I, I showed this to you in, um, drawings earlier. Here, it's interesting to note that when George Thompson gutted the back of the building, he didn't bother to to, uh, reskin the building. He just filled up the old windows with brick and left the, uh, lintels and the window sills. So, uh, you can see all of that right here. This, this is the rear yard. If you were to walk up to this fence and look down, you would be looking down a floor and a half into the library's rear yard. And hazed here in white is the bulk of the proposed rear yard extension. And this is a view from the townhouse next to the library on Seventy-Ninth Street, looking west. So in the distance, you see the Benson under construction. It's now fully built. Uh, this rear yard, um, has many levels, and it's, um, no one actually can go here. You have to climb up a ladder to get up to this level, and you can see the condensing units you saw from the roof. So here is the bulk as it would appear from the rear yard to the east of the library. So I'm gonna, um, not end on any of those dreary photographs, and I'm going to take you back to the library's elegant facade and a rendering of the reason that the library would like to do this, to increase its storage. This is a, a rear yard addition to an individual landmark, which will allow the library to plan for its future at this location. Um, I think, uh, I think we've shown that we're, there's nothing historically significant that's being compromised. Um, it's not at all visible from the public way, and this does not compromise the whole in the donut, uh, which I know Landmarks, uh, and is concerned about. So that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so let's see if we have public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify in this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Gregory Colla to take us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We received, uh, one sign-up in advance, uh, that was Friends of Upper East Side, so I'm going to promote you to panelists now. And if you could just unmute your line, I'll, you have three minutes to speak.
Hello, this is Laura Varelli, representing Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. Chair Carol and honorable commissioners, the New York Society Library is an important and beloved institution on the Upper East Side, and we generally support their much-needed expansion plan. We appreciate that they are filling in their notes and crannies instead of building a major addition. The proposed addition is muted, reversible, and not visible for any public thoroughfare. We're all denying intervention that will allow for the library to function more efficiently. Friends' only concern is regarding the capacity of the proposed storage. We commend the library in its, in its strategic, strategic thinking to enable the entire collection to be stored on-site. However, if space needs increase in the future, we would encourage an exploration of off-site storage. Thank you.
And thank you, Lara. Uh, and to note, Manhattan Community Board Eight also approved of this two-story exen, extension, and they approved it as presented.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so the testimony was supportive. Um, I don't know if you have any final comments you want to make before we move into our discussion.
Carolyn, would you like to comment on the off-site storage?
Yeah, I, I would, um, I, I would just like to mention that one of the reasons that we are doing this renovation in the first place is to ensure that all of our books can remain on this site, and this, um, this renovation will allow us to open up some space in the building. That will, will allow us to reconfigure the space so that we'll get additional book storage in the library, opening up one whole full stack that will give us many, 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 uh, decades of, uh, new book storage as well as, um, better working conditions for staff and additional, uh, space for public events and, um, for member reading. So one of the things that we're trying to do with this renovation is keep all of our books on-site because our collection is historically important. Um, it is a growing collection, and it is unique, um, not only in New York City, but in, you know, in the, uh, in the state and around the country. So it's, it's important to us to keep those, those books here.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions or? Okay, I don't see any final questions, so I'm sending you all requests to unmute so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So mote.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so this is for a non-visible twenty-three-foot-high uh, community facility addition, rear addition that fills in what is the remainder of a rear yard, this remainder of the rear lot, um, that is on a building that is built almost to its full lot and surrounded by other buildings that are built to their full lot, with the exception of the One Row House partially behind them at fifty West East Eightieth Street. And, um, again, it's not visible from any public thoroughfare, uh, twenty-three feet high and clad in metal panels. So Commissioner Bland, would you like to start this one?
Sure, it's so easy. And it's the end of the afternoon. Wonderful building, wonderful. Uh, it's good to be reminded that this is New York City's oldest uh, cultural institution, seventeen fifty-four, amazing. Uh, no, this is, uh, luckily they have this little space to, uh, very efficiently use, uh, for an extension. Uh, this is about the end of the extended, I guess, I suppose maybe a rooftop could be thought of, but, uh, our librarian said decades in the future, so I totally support this as appropriate and wish them well.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutti?
Um, it is remarkable that this small space is enabling you as, as, uh, is enabling the applicant, as Fred said, and as the applicant said themselves, to, uh, to not only expand their storage, but to enable them to just make their working situation better, their event situation better. It's like extraordinary to me. So I want to congratulate them on doing a great job. Looks very well designed. It's not visible, and I'm very happy to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I, I think this project is really wonderful. Um, first of all, just, you know, the reason, the logic for the expansion is, um, I, I, is, is very, is so focused and, so I think so important, the retention of books, uh, uh, these particular, this particular collection. So, so interesting, and the fun that these architects, like so much of their work, have come up with is so refined and, um, and elegant, and, um, while it is has nothing to do with the historic character of the building, it, um, it frames it. It quietly, um, allows for the important building to, to continue to be, um, you know, significant in its own right without competing with it. I just think it's a really beautiful project and meaningful project, and I find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I agree with what all of the other commissioners have said, uh, and hope to make a visit to this, uh, library, which I have never visited, so.
We would love to give you a tour.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyway, I, uh, support the, uh, application.
All right, Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Devonshire?
I wish they could make it larger.
Maybe, someday.
I think it's, it's wonderfully appropriate and bravo to the library.
And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with all the commissioners. The wonderful projects, uh, and, uh, glad to support them.
Okay, great. So I think we have a consensus to approve, uh, with full support here. And, um, Commissioner Goldblum, can I ask you to read the motion?
You can. All righty, regarding fifty-three East Seventy-Ninth Street, the New York Society Library and Individual Landmark, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. I, uh, recommend approval finding that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the work will not cause the removal or of or damage to any significant architectural features, and that the existing rear yard is a small paved and walled-in space. And because the rear yard abuts a large apartment building to the west and is structured for lot covers to the north, the construction of rear yard addition will not diminish any significant green space on the individual landmark site.
Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Hardly second.
All right, and Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Great, okay, and that, thank you. That concludes our public hearing today, September twentieth. Want to thank everyone for participating today, and thank you, as always, Commissioners, for all of the great work that you do. Thank you, and we'll, we will not see you next week, but we'll see you in October.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.